All right. We've got 6:30. Let's call a meeting to order and start by standing for the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Hold up, please, these.
Here.
Here.
Done.
Here.
Hi.
Yeah.
Lindsey.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
To your recognition. So we have a couple of recognitions, solo ensemble. This is actually from this last fall. Mr. Nevers was in the office today explaining how due to COVID, they tried to separate it a little bit to give a little bit more spacing. So from this past fall, we had several first place winners, Alexis Spaghetti in classical vocal solo, Alexis Spaghetti musical theater vocal solo, Jasmine Cool, classic vocal solo, Jasmine Cool musical theater vocal solo, Libby Dunn with a flute solo, Ella Fox musical theater vocal solo, Daniel Nordstrom classic vocal solo, and then in second place, Daniel Nordstrom with a trombone solo. So they were Fall State Solo Ensemble participants for the Middle Point School Music Program. So congratulations. Then we also have the Wisconsin School Music Association. We had three students who have been selected to be a part of the State Honors Project. Congratulations to Jasmine Cool, Ella Fox, and Ellie Webb. For their, you fill out, or you fill out, sorry, you put together like an audition tape and send it on, and you are selected from that to be a member of the State Music Honors, whether it's the choir or the band. It's a very difficult place, position to get into. And these three certainly worthy of that recognition. So congratulations to these three fine young ladies.
Real quick, I just want to acknowledge that, I'm just acknowledge the time that Nate and Dr. Lindsey have served with us in this eventful three-year term. I don't know if you knew what you're signing up for when you signed up, but we appreciate your efforts. And unless we can find a way to back here for one more special meeting, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to approval of minutes. I will entertain more to approve. Any discussion on the minutes? Call the question, please, Andy.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Saber?
Yes.
Move on communications, Board of Communications.
I have a couple I want to comment on. I have received now two people that request to go to five days school. That's all. I have many others that say we should stick with what we've got, just to comment on that. I haven't made up my mind yet. Then I have two communications particularly about the transgender policy, both in support and one I think that was outstanding. I hope you all read it from Kirby Winger. That was outstanding, what she reported. That's all I have to comment.
Sure. I received transgenders emails as well as some in supports for five days, some in not in support. And I guess the one thing I would just say is, the one thing about the emails we've received about transgenders and particularly towards the end of the letters, it constantly had to drag athletes into the discussion. And what bothers me is the athletes didn't ask to be drubbed into this discussion. And I've always been told if you're going to drag somebody else into an argument to make a point, maybe you ain't making a very good point because these athletes have done nothing but hold this school and make this school proud. And for constantly, I don't know why, but are they put on a higher pedestal? Yes, they are. There's a reason for that. They have an athletic court. Vicki, do we not have an athletic court? Do we have to bye-bye?
Yes.
They all are held accountable for everything they do, whether classroom, outside of the classroom, outside of the school. So they are on a higher pedestal. They didn't ask to be brought into this, and that's all I want to say. I received similar communication on both those issues, both sides of the issue. So really appreciate your feedback.
I don't think I received any emails that the board wasn't on, so I don't have anything to share there. I did have a few conversations with folks around the going to, going from a four day to a five day a week scheduling. One of the words that came up, well, actually two things, the words either consistency or being complacent came up in those conversations a lot. And so I think that as we have this conversation tonight, we need to think about how we walk that line between providing a consistent environment, but not be complacent in the education we're providing. The other thing I'd like to address around the four or five, four day a week, five day a week conversation is that there was some feedback around why are we having this conversation? And I'd just like to share that I feel like as a board member, if I have constituents who are asking me questions that I feel like need to come before the board, whether I agree or disagree, it needs to be a topic that we're having in this open forum. And so I hope that nobody is disappointed if they see something on the agenda that they feel like has already been discussed or resolved because that is our, in my opinion, that is our job as a board to be having those conversations.
I have similar, a couple of other comments on the masking, and I think that's probably part later. But some of the spirit that currently would exist in the current program, that one, when that topic comes up.
Similar comments on the transgender policy, four days versus five days. I did get a couple of emails on the agenda within the school early, and they, these emails were that. The face mask policy, some communication there, but is the school's plan moving forward? Do we have authority to implement our own policy? We did get the opinion from my lawyer, that really helped. I think that should be shared with the community. The sidewalk on Cuthbert Street, we talked about in March. There was an email put out saying that that was not an option, I guess. I think, I think it should still be on the table. Just because it's not easy doesn't mean that we should not pursue it. I think we're spending $12 million on that school down there, and I think the street that carries the address for the school should have a sidewalk on. And then there's a pothole in that entrance into that parking lot where the, where the parents pick up their kids. And I know it'll probably tore up this summer, but I mean, somebody, all I'd have to do is take a couple of five-day-old pills of growling and put it in that pothole. I've been approached by a couple of parents, like, why can't you fill in the pothole? And it's a, it's a pretty good sense. Yeah.
I've had several negative feedbacks about the elementary school, again, that we're building a building that we're not gaining anything for the teachers. I'm not sure about the square footage, but I've been told that maybe they're not even doing hardly anything. But the gym, they can't have programs in there because the riser won't fit, that there is no additional parking, that we're into the cafeteria now, which is proving to be more extensive than they anticipated, and we haven't really got to the problem building, which is the old building. So some of the comments I've heard are we've got a cafeteria and a gym, so what have we really gotten? If we'd have built up here, I'll just comment again, we would have had uniform drop off with us, we would have transported personnel between buildings and all the cost for maintenance of that. I know it's a dead issue, but I'm just concerned what we're getting, and I hope Tim can address this night with the building project update.
I received communications a lot like the rest of the board of the transgender issue and the four to five days, pretty much just what everybody else said, nothing out of the ordinary. Had to correct some people with some information that they had wrong regarding the transgender issue, but we can get into that later too. So now it'll open up to citizen communications. I have one sign up. I would like to make sure that everybody states their name before they speak. We're going to limit everybody to three minutes. So try to keep it under three minutes so everybody can get in, and Wisconsin law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. So with that, I have one signature. Kirby Winger would like to discuss the nondiscrimination policy update, transgender non-binary.
Thank you. I'm Kirby Winger. Hopefully people can hear me. I am an alumni. Actually, Andy and I were classmates of the Middle Point School District, a very proud alumni. I have three kids in the school district now, and I just wanted to share a couple of things. One, thank you to the school board. I mean, talk about trying time to be leading anything, let alone a school. And so thank you, thank you for all the work that you guys have done. Secondly, I just wanted to voice my support for the update to the nondiscrimination policy for transgender and non-binary students. I think, you know, Ms. Klein and Ms. Ulrich have done an amazing job of researching the topic and bringing forth a proposal to the group. I wanted to just kind of reach out afterwards, after the meeting last month. I was just interested in kind of learning and understanding more. There were some key questions that the board brought up that I thought were interesting. So I just spent some time, we've got resources at the corporation that I work for that is very engaged in ensuring we're an inclusive place to work. And so I leveraged some of those resources to just learn more about the topic and to answer some of the questions that came up here. So first, one of the questions was how many other school districts have a policy similar to what was proposed here? And I actually was surprised to find there are more than 170 school districts in the state of Wisconsin that have updated their policy. So my understanding, there's about 400 school districts in the state, so almost half have updated their policy to really incorporate protections for transgender and non-binary students. The source for that was G-Safe, which you can go out and check out for yourself. Secondly, there was a lot of discussion of isn't this covered under existing federal or state or school policy? Same source, G-Safe, really what they, the short of it is that no, pupil nondiscrimination laws include sexual orientation, and making sure I say these things right, and but they don't include any mention around gender identity or expression. So it really is a gap in the discrimination policy, and this is why so many school districts, right, almost half have updated their policy. In addition, I was really kind of took by some of the things that Dr. Lindsey had shared about his experience with transgender students and looked up some facts from the CDC, so a survey that they do annually of high school students. And there were some staggering facts. Forty-three percent of transgender youth have been bullied at school, sixteen percent for non-LGBTQ, twenty-nine percent of gender transgender youth have been threatened or injured with a weapon at school. That's compared to six percent for non-LGBTQ. Seventy-eight percent of non-LGBTQ mostly earn A's and B's. That drops down to fifty-five percent for transgender. Sixty-one percent of transgender youth are battling symptoms of depression, compared to twenty-nine percent for non-LGBTQ youth. Forty-five percent of transgender youth have seriously considered attempting suicide, only thirteen percent for non-LGBTQ. And twenty-nine percent of transgender youth have attempted suicide with only, compared to five percent for non-LGBTQ youth. So for me, it's really easy to kind of hear those stats and say, okay, wow, there's stats. They kind of hit you, but then I think if you just kind of let it settle a little bit and sit with those stats a little bit and think about kids in our school district that earn those stats, and really think about what if it was your child or it was your grandchild, they're just trying to figure out who they are, they're just trying to come to school, get an education. And I think you as a school member have a really unique opportunity to kind of hear their voice. And I can speak to Gary, I mentioned athletes and, you know, musicians and people who are excelling academically, they tend to have a lot of voices speaking for them. I don't necessarily hear a lot of voices speaking for this population, which is why I mentioned it. And, and so I think you guys have a really unique opportunity to kind of hear their voice, recognize it, and just address a gap in our policy to show support for these students when really kind of every day through those stats, you can hear every day they're fighting to find their place. So I appreciate the time. I'm probably over the three minutes. Thank you for hearing me out. And once again, thanks for all that you do for the school district.
Thank you. All right, nobody else signed up, but I will turn and ask. Yeah, we'll put it here. Okay.
My name is Jenny Pete, and I just want to share some numbers with everybody here. In regards to going back five days a week, at the last meeting, the decision was made to stay four because we were offering both virtual and in-person platform. And according to the last numbers, our COVID dashboard on our district website page, we have fifty-seven virtual learners, seven hundred and fourteen in-person learners, for a total of seven hundred and seventy-one students here. So fifty-seven virtual learners is seven point four percent of our entire student population. And in regards to the discussion of going back five days a week, if we take out those eight early childhood learners who are not in school on Wednesdays anyways, that brings it down to six point three percent of our total student population that would be virtual learners. It is my understanding that at the grade school level, each class has their own dedicated virtual, either teacher or intern. I guess I'm just here to ask you guys to please give our kids some consistency, breaking up their week with Wednesday off. I guess in my mind as a parent, it's far from consistent. You know, I fight the bedtime battle every Tuesday night because they know that we don't, we don't have to go to school, you know? So, and I know something that will probably be brought up tonight in regards to this is the state testing that has to be done, and I understand that it's the district's plan to let those students come in and do testing on the Wednesdays that we are virtual, but I want to throw some numbers around that as well. And I guess Mitch or Matt or anybody, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the state testing is done with grades three through 10? Is that correct?
No ninth graders.
No ninth graders.
Three through eight and seven.
Ninth has expired.
Ninth has expired.
Okay, so my, so that's, I had asked Mitch for the number breakdown of virtual students by grade level, and those students that will need to come in and do testing during alternate hours is twenty-four students. So we're really putting seven hundred and forty-seven students out of a day of education. So those twenty-four students can come in and test, and I'm not here to just throw numbers and be negative Nancy here. I did do some research on the DPI's website. We can't apply for later hours to do state testing. It's my understanding that we can test until eight o'clock at night, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, or Saturdays from eight till four if we request that. And just a couple more numbers and facts to put around this is, I have a second grader in the whole first semester. She went in person eighteen days. That was all she got first semester for in-person learning. She got a great education. She loves her teacher. She loves her class. I think the teachers are doing a great job. However, if we can put those students in class, six more Wednesdays before now in the end of the year, that is thirty-three percent of the in-person days that these grade schoolers got the entire first semester. Six more days or five more days would be half or more of the in-person learning days of high school and middle school, middle school students got the entire first semester. I guess I, in sharing all these numbers, I ask you to take that into consideration as well when you're considering ending the school year early to take more of these precious instruction days away from our kids. I guess I ask you to put that on the adults and put that on the construction crews to make that up themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Yes. All right, Nathan, yes. I'm Judy Pelton. I am an assistant at the Middle Point High, or Middle School. And I believe Matt's passing out some information I kind of would like you to look at and consider.
He is too.
Thank you. And I apologize for not having this sent out before. So with that being said, tonight you will decide to increase the wages of the support staff by offering a CPI. Although this is really appreciated, and it really is, I do ask you to consider to increase the base on more than just the cost of living, which the school board is capable of doing. I know budgets are tight, but so are ours at home. CPI is not a true cost of living, and we all know that. I'm not only speaking for myself, but I know most of the support staff is in similar positions. For example, I've worked for the, for this district for forty-three dedicated years, and I'm currently making the same yearly income as I did twelve years ago. My wages fluctuate due to picking up extracurricular duties, working games, coaching, cheerleading, supporting athletes with special needs, et cetera, to make ends meet. I do work odd jobs in the summer as well. In recent years, circumstances have worked against us. Students come and go, which fluctuate our options for extracurricular income. The support staff lost almost half of our TSA retirement in order to hire an additional teacher. That was a board decision, and that was significant to us. When Act 10 went into effect in 2010, we lost our true ability to negotiate our well-being. This is now our platform for negotiations, and I ask that you do not take that power lightly. We need to support our staff, all of our staff, to maintain our incredible report card. It takes all of us, including you, to keep it. I'm asking you to consider higher than a CPI increase and to possibly set a time to maybe further discuss this. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Is there any more people tuning in that would like to speak? No? Okay. We will move on to items for information discussion, the HSR building update. We have Tim Rupert here. Yep, he's online.
Hello. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Very perfect. And then Mitch, do you have the PowerPoint up, or do you want me to pull it up?
I hope I have it up again.
All right, perfect. I'm not able to see it, so you might just have to take a look at what page you're on then. So I can give a progress update here and then answer a few other questions as well. So overall, our progress update for March, April here, the building addition is wrapping up. They're starting the installation of the skylight over Main Street. The canopy on the north side is now installed, as well as renovating the existing cafeteria is underway. They are finishing up the finishes in the bathroom off the main street, it's off main circulation, and then the railing system, the stainless steel railing system is put in as well. So the second page here. Overall progress update, things are tracking as we predicted. We're currently, March, or we're currently in month thirteen of eighteen, so we're about seventy-two percent complete of, overall, in the duration of the project. We're moving into the renovation portion with the addition planned to be turned over in May. So it's been the plan from the beginning, and things are tracking, tracking more than need to. A few images here showing construction progress. Hopefully you had a chance to take a look at some of this as well on site. But some of the images of the new media library center, so the finishes are primarily in place there as well as all the different lighting, different mechanical systems. They're really just doing kind of wrap-up stuff in there as well, and then finishing some of the life safety systems. So the sprinkler, fire alarm, some of those systems that we need for full occupancy as well. Going on to the fourth page, showing some pictures of the main street as well as the north entry. Things are, things are looking good. The temporary blanket that was over, over the skylight system is being removed and in progress. And pending the weather, I know they're working on the installation of the actual skylight system itself. And then the next page, page five, is some pictures of the railing system. So this is the railing system that we did tweak a little bit during the construction phase, and I liked the outcome of it. I think it looks really good with the metal mesh in there, so I think that was a really good, good idea for a little bit of cost savings as well by the school board. And then on the picture on the right is a picture of the tile in the restrooms as well. And this will be continued into the building renovation portions as well. So a lot of these same finishes that you're seeing in, in the new construction areas are also planned for the renovation areas as well with the goal of really making it a cohesive building in the end. Construction progress update. So the cafeteria renovation is underway, and it was able to start early, so thank you for those discussions. Our main goal is to be able to turn the building over a little bit earlier than what we, what we originally planned. Hopefully in the beginning part of the fall, and areas like this are critical to making that all happen as well. So they're starting to work on the foundation pieces for the addition in the corner of the room, as well as some of the openings of the spaces within here. Some items that are part of the discussion when we were on site is they were doing scoping of some of the existing roof leaders, so the, basically the drainage for the roof system, and we found that there is compromised piping underneath the floor slab, and that we are recommending that that be, that is replaced as part of this planning process. So a little bit of unknown, but just looking at the picture there, it's, there's a lot of foreign material within the sanitary line, and to put new finishes in that space, we really do want to do it right and make sure that, that we can reroute those and get the water where it needs to properly go. So with the age of the building, not unanticipated, and especially with cast iron of that area. But until you start really getting into it, you just, sometimes you don't know what's underground, like in this very case, as well. So that was kind of a little bit of a thing that we uncovered during the cafeteria scope itself. So we're in process of, yep, we're in process of rerouting that now.
Are you open for questions?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. How much is this going to heat up of the budget? Is this a problem or a gap?
As far as this is related, so we're still, we're basically in the process of working through that. So we haven't got a formalized price yet. We, we don't, I, we're still in the process. I, I don't want to speculate at this point until we, until we can further diagnosis. But we do anticipate this is handled within the normal construction contingency, that it's not something outside of that.
Now, how about the gym? I've been told they won't take risers now for COVID.
Years in the new gym you're talking about? As far as, I think there's a conversation about the timeline that those are going to be installed, but those are planned to be installed there.
They will, they all is a part of the building project?
Are you, are you talking about the stage area or?
The stage.
Dr. Lindsey's asking about the stage area.
So the stage area was always meant to be a portable system, and that's provided, if it's chosen to, be provided by the district, separate from the construction progress, process. So that was always anticipated to be alcoves that could be suitable for a lot of different things, including the stage. And a portable stage gives you that flexibility if you choose to add it there.
I got you. And then what square footage are we increasing for the teachers in the classroom? What square footage are we actually getting?
So I can give you some square footages here as well. So the building addition is twenty-one thousand square feet for the building addition. The bulk of that obviously is the, the gym. The bulk of that obviously is the, the gym spaces and supporting spaces for that. And then the library media center, there is a specialized sensory room that's associated with that as well. The existing building is currently 51,000 square feet, and we're fully renovating that as well and expanding into spaces that weren't either fully utilized and taking spaces like the library space to enlarge academic spaces. So the current, the current plan for all the education spaces is to have more consistency within the classroom sizes, enlarge the classrooms where we can. And quite a few of the classrooms are going from either four classrooms down a side of a hallway down to three, to give adequate spaces and support spaces within all those rooms, as well as storage within there. So the actual square footage, most of it, the building addition, is to help alleviate some of the pressure, pressure on the square footage within the academic spaces.
Worked that out with the use of the storage?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Did you work it out with the use of gaining storage?
Yeah, so we're, each of the classrooms, again, we're trying to have consistency within there. There's, I know I broke apart the actual linear feet of storage within each classroom, but basically the entire length of the hallway wall is floor to ceiling and wall to wall cabinetry within those spaces. On the opposite wall, we're in discussions about if there is additional storage or not within those spaces. But that would be planned to be more mobile or flexible on that point. So speaking from a lot of different other, a lot of other projects, this is, we're putting in a lot of storage that's built in, in this building.
Thanks.
I know you had a comment as well about some of the site and some of the site improvements that are happening. And the bulk of the site improvements are really focused around safety and security and just having a more organized pickup and delivery and drop-off in the Southern Park lawn in particular, and making sure that there's organized flow, really alleviating a lot of the pressure on Cawthorn Street and getting the traffic flow off Cawthorn and getting it to a more dedicated area. Did, was there any other questions that I may have missed on there?
I'll let you do it.
Okay, so a little bit of update. We are moving forward with the furniture planning for the library space. So on the next slide, we can see the, some of the different renderings of the space. Demco was a provider that's providing the furniture system, and here's some three-dimensional views of what's being planned and procured for that space. It's a nice, nice layout to really outfit that space appropriately. Overall, on the project budget tracking report, we are tracking, I think, very comfortably at this point. We are entering into an X phase of renovation, but I think we're entering it favorably right now. Overall, construction progress, we're month 13 of 18, again, so 72%. Overall, construction billing, we're with pay up number 11. We're at 6.44 million out of the 10.56 construction value, so about 61% construction billing complete. And really no new update to the project contingency or total project cost. We're at 2.62% of contingency items of total construction progress, cost, which includes the bulk of it was the rock and poor soil conditions at 187,000 from last, last summer and early fall. So, so I think we're tracking, tracking where we need to, but we will continue to keep tracking it, especially as we move into some of the renovation portions as well. On the next slide, there was a request by the district to get updated pricing for the restroom finishes. So these restroom finishes are in the 1990s portion in the addition. This was separated as alternate number five, and it's an option if we do choose to go forward with that. So we asked it, we, we requested from the general contractor, Kramer Brothers, for updated pricing for those four spaces. And they added a price of $72,425. They did note, just with the construction market volatility, that that proposal, this pricing is good for 30 days if we were to move forward with that discussion. So. So I guess with that, that's kind of the overall, overall update. Is there any questions or comments?
On that cafeteria in that roof, Tim?
Yep.
So, so you said one is compromised. How many drain pipes are there?
There's currently four, one in each corner for that. We, we know that one for sure is compromised within that space. And if, in our opinion, if we're rerouting them, we would prefer that to get out of ground regardless of this, just to basically alleviate that from being a concern in the future. So to tie them all together and get it out of, under this lab is our recommendation.
So, so knowing that, Tim, and the existing gym is the same age as the building, I assume. So is it fair to say the rest of the drain pipes in the building could be compromised?
Most of the, so there, that's a fair assumption, and sometimes it's case, sometimes it's not. In this case, we did sculpt the majority of the existing lines and found the ones that we believe that were compromised, where we are replacing. Some bulk of the existing drain lines are being replaced through this planning process. This area was isolated and not planned to be replaced, but the rest of the building is planned to primarily be replaced.
Okay. This didn't show up on your scans? Tim, prior scans, it didn't show up?
So this was an area that scope got added later in the process, so we did not scan that space. So that original space, there was minimal work in that space. So we did not scan it when we did the original.
So to ensure I'm understanding correctly, we know that the drain, that there are drain pipes compromised under the other part of the school, the part where there'll be a renovation, but that's budgeted in?
To our best of our ability, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we're talking the, the roof drain pipes. Are the sewer, the sewer drain pipes that run to the mains out onto the street being replaced also?
So the sewer mains were recently replaced within the last, Roger probably knows the exact amount, but within the last 10 to 15 years. So those have been replaced with modern PVC. So those areas are, are in good shape, the sewer side within the building. Those are cast iron, and those are the areas that we're replacing within the building already.
The sewer pipe subgrade have been replaced, Tim?
The sewer pipe outside the building footprint's already been replaced.
Several years ago, they redid Cawthorn and went down, tore everything out, and also we did sewer and water lines. Don't get any property down Cawthorn.
Yeah, I, I'm talking from, from under our building out to the street. Mitch, has that been replaced?
Yes.
That I would ask to ask after that question.
All right. Those, those are replaced, Mitch.
Okay, okay. And Tim, when you're down in that parking lot, could you just look at that sidewalk and give us some ideas of what could be done there without adding any additional cost to it, I guess, if that's possible? Would you do that for us?
Yeah, so we could definitely do a preliminary analysis of that. If we move past kind of preliminary analysis, I would encourage us to utilize our civil engineer for any more in-depth planning. But that is something we can definitely look at a little bit more detail.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Any other questions for Tim?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
All right, we'll move on to the budget update.
Okay, so if you look at the budget presented in at this point in time in 2020, we had used 65% of that budget. Coming back to the March of 2021, the percentage used is at 59.3% of our total budget. Some of the things that we're running into now will be not knowing how the pandemic would play out. We had to make sure that we budgeted for potential subs, potential field trips. All the things that would take place in a normal school year were included in our budget process. As we get later into the school year, and we know those things can happen and won't happen. I think that's where you're starting to see a little bit more of the separation of less of the budget money has been expanded, expended at this point in time. Which, again, I'm working with Marcia so that as we get some of the last budget requests for the 2021 school year in place, to Tim's point, we may be able to pay for the alternate for the two restrooms upstairs and downstairs out of fund 10 monies. So some of the budget surplus on fund 10, I know that question has come up at a board meeting several months ago. If that would be a possibility, we're trying to make sure that that could happen yet out of this year's fund 10 monies that would be available. So last year we put over $200 into fund 46. So instead of having that kind of money, we would look at, all right, we're going to pay for, you know, with board approval, we would pay for that alternate bid and take out a fund 10. So that would mean that there would be less surplus, you know, what do we do with that surplus at the end of the school year?
The, the budget estimate or the add-on estimate that we received tonight is good for 30 days. Do you feel like we're in a position to make that decision in the next 30 days?
I think yes. I think budgetarily, yes, through, you know, working with Marcia, getting, getting some of those numbers finalized, we would have that information available to us. I already spoke with the auditor, and the auditor had said basically that is, as they, as they deemed it, a management decision. So as a board, you could approve that expenditure, and we could take care of it.
I think, you know, part of me, this is the only offer that are that for 30 days. Part of me has a problem with that, and we've basically been told that this renovation is going to pass a little more than what we planned on, but they can't give us any kind of a number.
Well, that's, that's, Tim's response was coming from Hot Design.
Right, I just, I see what you mean.
And Kramer's is coming from, we talked to subcontractors, and we know this is the price that, that the plumbing will, you know, plumbing guys, the title guys, that's the price that they will charge us to get that, that project done. So, yeah, I do understand, everybody wants a decision yesterday on a large dollar amount, and I'm never comfortable doing that, you know, being pressured. But this, this was something I had asked Kramer's to do, and they, they provided this information at the end of last week. So why we're ever put it out here tonight for, for the board to be seen.
Anyone on that, Eric? There you go. That's pretty much what I just did. Outstanding. Okay. Let's move on to action items. Let's go over to the health insurance, Mitch.
Originally, the district was quoted a potential increase of 5.5% for next school year. And in, in a recent history, we have tried to do kind of a two-year plan where, okay, if the price is this one year, would you agree to do something not to exceed? We were in a position where the health insurance company basically paid out 100, 106%. Their, their loss ratio was 106%. In other words, we had a lot of expensive claims, and the insurance company spent out more than what it would have really made by our premiums. Quite frankly, I was, I was anticipating closer to a double-digit increase. Working with Liz Danenberg, she went back to, and it was like a, I want to say a 6.5%, 6.9% in year two, they were doing not to exceed 6.9%. Liz went back to the Dean Health Plan, shared some information that we were able to collect at least in-house. And they were willing to, they came back with a proposal that reduced it by a percentage in each year. So we would be looking at a 4.5% increase in insurance for next school year. And a not to exceed guarantee of 5.9% in the 22, 23 school year. If we were to agree, if you were to agree to a two-year plan, so to speak.
When we've made the not to exceed agreements in the past, how frequently have we hit the, the not to exceed mark? And how often are they coming in below?
I would say, I think we've done it twice. I think it's 50/50. I think they, you know, one year it was not to exceed 5.5, and they came in at 5.5. I think the first time we did it, they came in maybe a couple of tenths below, you know, if it was 5.5. They came in at 5.3 to 5.2 or something, but they were underneath that. We have had, we've had some issues. We know, it was unheard of. My first year in this position, I went to a meeting at CISA, and all the superintents are talking about insurance increases, and a lot of them were at 8, 9, 10%. And they looked at me and they said, well, what's your percent increase? What are they quoting you? And several of them almost went in shock when I said 0%. We had a, we had a three-year stretch where the insurance premiums did not go, did not increase. There was no increase in the percentage. And then we've had claims filed, and the number has, has gone up. So a 4.5% is under some of the school districts that surround us in CISA, over maybe a couple of them. I know several schools, CISA has a insurance co-op, and 4.5% is less than what their co-op is coming in at as a percentage increase for next year. I think, considering where we, where we are, and where our claims have been, I, I think it's a, I think it's a very good proposal from Dean Health.
So Mitch, would you say what it is again? It was 4.5% this year, and then 5.5, not to exceed 5.925 next year?
Not to exceed 5.9.
Oh, 5.9, okay.
In year two.
I think it's an excellent deal.
Sorry, I couldn't get to the finance committee meeting, but looks like this was discussed.
Yeah. Quite, quite some detail, actually. About other options, we discussed other options, insurance options, discussed, we've tried that before. Brought in other, another insurance that was willing to pick up, you know, five or six, you know, with that one. And really then kind of shifted on to the fact that we are looking at a 20% increase over four years. And nobody really ever considers that part of their compensation, but the school and the taxpayer are paying 20% more for insurance over four years. We really kind of shifted to the plan we have and extremely low deductible that we have in place. And maybe looking at changing that to identify some cost savings on insurance. But I don't think we thought we were going to get better than the 4.5 in terms of this plan, but it was really a lot of discussion about the best approach for, for the deductible moving forward on the. uh, the best approach for, for the deductible moving forward on, on the the secondary plan that we have that currently says that one hundred and twenty.
The request was made to compare mineral pointy with other districts, so thank you for that email, Mitch. Um, that, that was some very helpful information. Uh, I do got a couple of questions on that. I don't have it in front of me, but I, I believe the monthly cost to an employee is fourteen hundred. Am I saying that right, Mitch? You might just want to look that up or put that up for the board. I guess my question is, the is the deductible expense in there on average?
Um, the, the monthly cost for a family plan is fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, okay.
So then the district would pay a percentage of that and the staff member pays their percentage.
So that fifteen hundred is a total cost, then divided by eighty, eighty-eight total.
Right.
Mitch, okay, so the staff then pays twelve percent over fifteen hundred.
Right.
All right.
And the deductible is not, is not figured out, I mean, if nobody has a claim, there's, they don't pay a, any, there's no deductible that's paid uh, for, for that individual, so that's not on a monthly basis.
Can we discuss the deductible, I mean, that's public information, Mitch.
It's one hundred, two hundred.
It's one hundred for?
A single plan.
Okay.
And two hundred for a family plan.
Okay, and that's the annual deductible.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, it's a twelve percent of fifteen hundred, and then is there any additional co-pay per incident?
Yes, office visits, there's a twenty-dollar co-pay.
Has it been recommended to the staff about a, a, an increase of any type, Mitch, since our, since the discussion we had at the finance meeting?
Uh, I've had several conversations, uh, prior to and post with the potential that deductibles may be changing. And, uh, there is a, a program, Employee Benefits Corporation, EBC, offers a flex plan that employees could take advantage of. We have not been able to have a meeting with all staff and a representative from Employees Benefit Corporation to, to talk about ways that people can save money by utilizing the flex plan and if deductibles are changed, that would be a good opportunity to, to, through EBC, to be able to manage that deductible or differently.
I understand. I know, I know the teacher contracts, we, we're up against the calendar on that and insurance has to be approved for teacher contracts. Can be signed.
It's, yeah, there, it's, it kind of goes hand in hand with each other.
All right. Per, personally, I would like to see what the four point five means to, to the district. Um, what it was last year. Uh, what twenty percent force, oh, that'd be figured in four years.
Last year, the monthly premium based on our plan was fourteen hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Fourteen forty-nine.
And this year, with the four point five percent, will be fifteen fourteen.
Okay. You have a number of employees on that taking turns there, Mitch?
I think there's sixty-one on the family. Twenty-two on single, and single went from five fifty-seven to five eighty-two.
It appears that we're, we're locked into the increase and the, the provider, I mean, there, there's only so many choices in our area we could use and I don't, I don't know if that's, and we discussed that in the the finance committee too. I would assume they will come back close to the same, I, I don't know, but we, we have not done that exercise, I guess. But it seems like the staff are satisfied with the current plan.
I would say yes.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to, um, accept the health insurance increase.
All right, if I correct it up properly, it's about a four thousand dollar increase on an annual basis and I, maybe a few pennies off here and there, so I'll second that. Or I make a motion that we accept insurance proposal as it stands. Four thousand increase, I think that's not going to be the annual salary roughly, yeah.
Total for the entire?
Entire district, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, we don't want to have any more discussion on the health insurance possibilities.
Is a four thousand increase, Mitch, something that you see there, you, you agree with?
We'll put that.
Put the end of four, four and a half percent.
I, I think that's a I, I think that's a very reasonable increase, that, that percentage. You know, like I said, when you compare it to some of the other districts in our area, that four and a half percent is, is better. And I think on that, that information that I was able to share with you guys from CISA, I think our, our starting was even lower than several school districts, you know, to where, what that monthly cost is, so I think.
None of you guys are Medicare agents, my supplement went up eight percent, so I, I think this four and a half is a good deal, so.
Does. Before we go on this, is this for the sports staff too? Same plan for the sports staff?
Yes.
Same cost?
Yes, sports staff. Yeah, everything is, everything is, all this, all district employees that wish to be part of the health insurance, that, that's part of this.
You got four thousand annually?
Annual, it actually comes out, it's a, it's a little closer to five when I, as I haul up here. So this master, but probably done beforehand, but did you guys discuss that in your meeting, you know?
No, we didn't have to pull that in.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't, okay.
That, that's a hundred thousand, four percent of your four thousand, I guess, doing the rough math.
Yeah. But it came to, uh, roughly four thousand five hundred dollars here, roughly, it's.
Didn't you say one month was?
Almost a four and a half percent.
Yes.
That would be even thousand dollars.
Are you, are you just talking about the increase though, Dr. Lindsay?
Uh, the, well, the total, again, rough figure, I didn't do this exact, it was like a hundred and five thousand, current cost is a hundred thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-three cents, something like that. So it came to forty-nine hundred dollars or forty-five, five dollar increase, roughly. Need a better mathematician than me. You, you're opposed on this day, no, okay. I trust you.
Hey.
I mean, we're talking, turn it fifty hundred for family times twelve.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, times times six, sixty-one.
Will we be getting any money back in the sense about the CARES Act or anything that might impact any of this? Is that out of the realm of possibilities on this?
Uh, Esser money would not cover.
Oh, wouldn't.
Insurance.
Being a thing, it's just what they're hoping.
What's that? I think it's just the increase. These guys are figuring.
That's all I think, it's just the increase.
That's the total.
Per plan? Just to the district.
Four thousand total.
It's forty-five hundred.
The, uh, if I'm looking at this, the total monthly.
Individual plans, why the five hundred dollars?
The total monthly premium a year ago was a hundred thousand, the total monthly premium and the new plan would be a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, I got a hundred dollars, six forty-six and thirty-three cents to the old plan and I got a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight to the new plan.
Okay, but a hu- a hundred thousand times twelve is one point two million dollars a year. If it goes up, right, that's what we just said, it's a hundred thousand dollars a month, or five percent.
Well, that's the annual, isn't it right, Mitch, because you've got sixty-one pay on.
You gotta take fifteen times twelve.
Oh, okay, times twelve. Oh, I see, that's just the month.
So the annual increase is about fifty, fifty-four thousand.
I'm so sorry, so I see that was the monthly expense. Plus fifty thousand more for the annual.
That's not budgeted for, correct? That is.
That's the budget we were presenting.
Yeah, the budget that was, was shared that, that evening, yes.
And I mean, I don't think it's better than the four point.
I, I don't know.
Which is why I think we then have to move on to look at other, other options.
Right, yeah.
This isn't one pattern, this is the third year out of four. Twenty percent of that number is two hundred grand. Yeah. No, Mitch, or did you make the call to see what, uh, uh, two fifty or five hundred dollar deductible, um, would, would change, um, our portion and the employees' portion?
That won't change this.
It changes just.
It'll change what happens in the district, but it won't change this.
Won't change the premium?
That's a high deductible plan and then we have a secondary plan, which is where the one hundred, two hundred comes in.
Okay.
And we made a difference between the one hundred, two hundred and the high deductible, deductible for the staff in the secondary.
Got it.
That's where the increased deductible would be dollar-for-dollar statements for the district.
Yes, got it.
To the two doctors, what, what is an average deductible in plans nowadays? Is that one?
They're all over the board, the numbers.
I mean, I, I would, I would say that an annual, annual deductible, five hundred dollars or less is pretty good. And, you know, twenty-dollar co-pay for visits is pretty good. At above average, certainly. A, a lot of people have five thousand cent dollar deductible.
Right, I understand.
So I, I think this is a good plan and I think a twelve percent cost sharing at employee is also a, a good deal. But, you know, that if, if, if we want to find a little room where we're tighter, want to find ways to increase, you know, that's another thing we could potentially increase is the, the percent payment ratio, you know, the ADH ratio.
Right.
Be adjusted at any point.
Yeah, we have a motion in the second. And there's a special meeting.
What's that?
Looking at the second, the second part. Here's the, that's our next meeting, correct? We can accept this and then
we're out of details.
Evaluate, we have the second portion, next meeting.
Yes.
Could do that.
The enrollment period for that, what's A is? We'll be going to next time, describing sixteen.
Were you talking about year two?
We may have.
Talking about year two or?
Let's, let's move on to this.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this current health insurance policy? Okay, can you call a question, please?
Lindsay.
Yes.
Doctor.
No.
Bellman.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Abstain.
Eisner.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. Motion passes, move on to, actually, number two, approval of teacher contracts.
As presented was a CPI increase, um, and steps for the salary schedule. CPI is one point two three percent. Conversation at the finance committee meeting. We have seventy teachers on the salary schedule. Of the seventy forty-nine or forty-eight. Forty-eight have master's degrees, so sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent of our staff have a master's degree. Then twenty-two, obviously, or thirty-one percent have a bachelor's degree. Uh, CPI, thirty-nine percent of our, our, not thirty, not, sorry, not thirty-nine percent, thirty-nine staff members will only be eligible for the CPI increase. So all over half of our, or over half of our staff are only eligible for CPI increase.
Mitch, would you mind repeating those numbers again? Um, full number of staff?
Seventy, full number of staff is seventy.
Yep.
Forty-eight have a master's degree.
Okay.
So twenty-two do not. And thirty-nine of the staff members are only eligible for a CPI increase, or fifty-five, fifty-six percent of our staff are only eligible for a CPI increase in this process, and CPI is one point two three percent.
Any recommendation from that of finance committee?
Yeah, I think we were in favor of this, uh, the bigger discussion we had, as it sits with, with this in, there's currently a deficit that is with the added positions in the budget we discussed. The emotional learning teacher could be that's the automatic. The custodian could be that as well, or could be discussed. Lightning, that's, his hundred thousand light minutes budget, I've said that. So there, there's ways to get back to, essentially, zero on the budget without you know, having to deplan this, it's just where we want to put, what budget we want to be expensing. There's other, other options, we want to be easiest as you know, or.
And we were looking for clarification, if the deficit number included CPI and steps, because we were, we were unsure
Yeah.
at that time, and they, Mitch sent that to the board, I believe, and, uh, that, that your budget number didn't include steps and CPI.
Correct.
Okay. Which is how we've been.
It goes in that.
Funding this.
Can we afford CPI, can we afford steps? And that's lanes, that, you know, there's, several.
So this is, this is typical from year to year, correct, when, when you have proposed for us, Mitch?
Correct.
Make a motion.
A second.
Probably good for the board to know, so deficit number was one hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the position basically for the social emotional was just under a hundred thousand. Calculated at a, the, the individual will have to have a master's degree, so it wasn't beginning wage, it was somewhere down. And family insurance. The salary for the new custodial position was figured a little bit further down than beginning wage and family insurance, and that was about fifty thousand, so almost an entire budget deficit could be erased by applying some of the Esser funds to those current positions.
The, the concern with that, though, is that the Esser funds are not, are, are not repeatable, right?
We, we, correct, we'll have this, this realm that we're getting now has to be extended by September of twenty twenty-three. And then, and then the next round, round three, has to be by September of twenty-four. So we would have funds available to cover in several years and the as the motion last month was the social emotions, we reviewed at the board next March to determine whether or not you wish to continue with that position. I, I would not typically make a recommendation to pay for a salary out of a grant, but knowing that you, you wish to review it in a year's time, I think it's a little bit safer recommendation. I think it's a little bit safer recommendation.
And, and I, I'm supportive of that position still, but what's crossing my mind is that. It is so hard to take something back after you give it, and I don't want to set us up. To, to fail, I don't want us to commit to something. Now that we can't see through three years from now, or three years from now have a really awful conversation about. Hey cuts.
Something.
Yeah, or some, something. I, I just, that's what's on my mind.
I, I don't disagree with that, but I think. You know, we're almost at elbow, I don't want to. If you'd have told me to. To add this position, we could not give the teachers anything after the year that they've had. My vote would instantly change. But I think that's certainly something. We can evaluate, but this is about. You know, the current staff and the CPI increases and steps. I appreciate the whole. Whole picture look, yeah. You know, maybe we need to reevaluate. Not only have a full budget look.
Is that possible? Our interviews are scheduled for. Position, that position has been posted. So, they're, they're interviewing next month.
Yeah, and, and that position had a really compelling case around. The fact that in some areas, we certainly are underserving the, the mental. Well-being of our students, I, I, there's no right answer, I'm just. These are the things that are going to provide, but this is not a easy decision.
The, uh, but, but the reason for that position that we approved last month was because of the pandemic. I mean, if our whole debt. By twenty twenty-four, we will be through that. If that position can be funded with. Here's mine.
All right, yeah, I think, I think we noted on it. Knowing that it would be difficult to fund that long term with our current situation, so. I think these votes are with that in mind, now that this will be up for review. And, but great points, Jim.
And, and the one hundred fifty-eight thousand, you're, you're comfortable and confident that we can get that to zero. By reallocating these funds.
Got you.
All right, any more discussion? On the. Schedule contracts. All right, we'll call a question, please, Andy.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisen.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. Number three. People, support staff, we've scheduled.
I'm not sure that there's anything. For you to approve, we, we brought. The support staff schedule to the committee. Assured comparison through the C set as to where we are. For starting wages in our support staff salary schedule where we are in the top end. Uh, we talked about making an. Adjustments. Looked at the potential for this custodial position. We had a conversation around some of the difficulties we've had. Firing. Someone. Based on the support staff scale, wage scale. But. Ultimately, the decision at the committee was to maintain the support staff, right? Maintain the support staff wage scale, and so, as, as is, as it currently sits. So, some staff members will receive a fifty cent. An hour pay raise. Others will get a CPI, those that are off the top end of the salary schedule. Are only eligible to receive a CPI salary increase. So, there really would not be, based, based on that, there would really not be anything that you would approve other than applying the salary schedule that says.
I will entertain a motion. Support staff, we're scheduled, I will make that motion.
And you said we didn't. Unless the only, you know, the other thing would be to apply that. Sure, but otherwise, if you, if there is no action, that would be the salary schedule.
Was that a second?
Sure.
Okay, uh, do we wanna have a discussion on this?
And just for board reference, for future reference, Mitch did provide some system information. Near, near the bottom, starting wage. In, near the top, in highest wage. So, it, it seems like a lot of districts just have a smaller. Start here, cap out right away. Where you tend to have more steps, allow people to continue to get increases.
I wanted to ask if that was an impediment to hiring people, because I think, wasn't, weren't we like twenty-two out of twenty-five districts on the initial hiring wage?
Yeah, yeah, for initial wage.
Does that impede hiring though? Initial entry of all people.
We discussed it, we haven't had a. This point, and it also. It also brings into the play. Playing around with that brings into play, year three, year four, year five, of the ladies who started. On, on the schedule as it is, it starts. If we were to increase that, maybe you have to stair step everybody, or have somebody come in. Making the same wage that somebody in year three or four.
And it, it takes ten years to reach the top of the scale, just like.
I think that's right. Yes, I think it caps it.
Yes, it's an accelerated, um, in, increase.
It's a, it's a fifty cent an hour increase. Each year. Based on the salary schedule till they top up. And then it's a CPI increase.
And I, I would call the benefit package of competitive. Or, or this generous. So, you get to keep that in my seat. Agreed?
Absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion on, uh, item three?
I just wanna highlight that, you know, teachers have had a rough year in support staff that. You know, have the, had the, you know. Remanger schedules and. You know, with kids being home and, you know, especially, you know, they basically had revamped the entire special education. Curriculum, so it was a, it was a, it was a tough year, but. Definitely been split the CPI increase.
Uh, we'll call a question, please, Andy.
Solomon.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisen.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Uh, to add, for approval, additive contracts.
This is tied to the base. Wage, and, and the additives are tied to the base wage, so when the base wage goes up. Whatever C guy percentage is the additive, so I shared out. Uh, late this afternoon, basically where the additive pay is. And the positions that we. Currently support, so. I would look at, look for approval to. The additive pay schedule for additive contracts.
We got a question, Mitch, I, I looked at that, thanks for sending that out. On, uh, it goes, I think twelve percent was the highest in, increase. Explain that again, as far as, that's the CPI off of the.
Twelve percent of the base, so a coach member, twelve percent of the base. Salary, so if the base salary is ten thousand dollars. They get paid twelve percent of that for that sport season.
So, every sport has a base?
Yes, every, every sport, every club activity has a percentage. That's attached to it.
Of a, of a year one teacher.
Of a year one teacher salary, it's always tied to the year one teacher salary, not to theirs, but to the beginning teacher's salary. So, some of the sport seasons that are longer. Tend to get paid a little bit higher percentage.
Fairly, fairly.
So, and high school, you know, high school varsity JV is paid a little bit more than, than middle school athletics, so.
So, last year compared to this year, there should be one point two three increase then.
Correct. But, twelve percent of that, you know, okay. A, a head girls basketball coach gets a twelve percent. Right, of that year one, so the year one base salary goes up CPI. My, that twelve percent is only going up whatever the CPI are in.
Right, yeah. Right, so you, yeah, you increase it, you increase by CPI, then you take twelve percent of it.
Yes.
Got it. And forgive me if you said this already, but are these all percentages the same as last year?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve. These additive contracts.
I'll serve it. Any discussion on the other contracts?
The only thing I can add is just be there. That the two middle school basketball interpreters, should they be listed?
We're working on that, we'll probably bring that back to you.
Okay.
We're working. Yeah, we, we just had that conversation today about how to, how to address next year because of the.
The schedule, he's probably have issues.
Yeah. So, the percentages, all the percentages are the same, but. We just had that conversation today about with.
Their history scheduled next year's.
Having, having those. Students that require that service, being involved in a lot more, so how do we approach that? So, we're trying to get that put into this additive salary schedule, so we'll bring that back.
Is there the, there must be the same number of positions? Where this proposal has last year?
Yes.
I do, same, same. Employees for all positions then?
Well, I, I don't know if all of the coaches will come back and do the jobs, but the, those positions are the same. From one year to next.
Just, it, our freshman program depends on numbers, like, so for, like, right now, there could be. Thirty-six to forty girls out for girls basketball, if that's the case, and we have, you know, twelve girls on the freshman team, twelve on the JV. We're gonna need an additional freshman core.
So, on the list that I sent out, there, if there was no name listed there, that meant that position. Was not paid out. We, we hold it, put it as a placeholder, just like we do budget, you know, a field trip, we put it in as a placeholder. So, that, as Vicki said, we get. Forty boys out for boys basketball, we're gonna have a freshman team, we need to make sure that we've had that. Accounted for and not try to scramble for that money, but if there are, but if there aren't enough for that. We do not pay that position. That, that, the money doesn't get divided anywhere else, it stays in the budget.
Okay. What's the total number again, Mitch, so the.
One forty-eight, seven fifty-five. That's off the twenty twenty-one. So, it would be a one point two three. Basically on that.
So, that's the last even number.
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion on the other contracts? Now, we'll call a question, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisen.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Solomon.
No.
Bush.
Epstein.
Chambers.
Yes. Uh, to five, approval of summer contracts, summer maintenance and summer contracts.
Summer maintenance, basically the, the projects that were approved through the Fund Forty-Six. Board meeting, so locker room floor is better, uh, kitchen floor. The ramp, the cafeteria, you'd approve that through Fund Forty-Six expenditures. The gym, the painting of the gym. The refinishing of the gym, for all of those things have been approved. And we are doing a, uh, in several of our classrooms, we're switching over to some LED lighting. Which will be that. That summer maintenance will be, expense will be paid for through some follow-through funding. Now, and it will not exceed five thousand dollars for that, so basically, those are the summer maintenance, there are any additional. Summer maintenance jobs that will be. Undertaking, those are gonna. Be planning with everything else going on, but then, under that subset was our summer contracts, we have six students. That we would like to offer summer employment to, uh, we've been a great help, students have been a great help all along, if Roger were here, he would. Echo those sentiments, but we, the last couple of years, we've hired six. And recommend hiring six, so I would look, I, I have their names if you want them, but. Blanket approval to hire the six students for the summer would be. Appreciate it. And those, those have been budgeted? Yes. Or it's out of Fund Forty-Six? That's not a Fun Four, that's just part of our budget, yeah, we do a budget for summer.
Okay.
So, I was, I was such a.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Moving forward. Future, are we gonna need as many? Young kids in the summer working with this many full-time janitors, historians?
That'll, that'll probably, I mean, we look at it on a year-to-year basis, and that might be a number that gets adjusted. Yes, certainly hiring another full-time staff.
I'm not talking about thirty, forty thousand dollars here, obviously.
Right. That is, that is a possibility.
What, what is the hourly rate for your students, Mitch?
Uh, if this is their first year, they're getting nine dollars an hour, if some of it has come back year after year, they get a fifty cent raise each year.
Okay.
How many hours do we typically?
Uh, they can work up to forty, uh, meaning. Most of them tend to be high school students, so Roger also knows that, hey, there's. You're going to this camp, there's a tournament that's gonna take you away, those kinds of things, you know. So, that they might not be working forty hours every week, they adjust their, their hours.
Sure.
But, they would be, they would be budgeted for forty hours.
Any more questions? For that one? All right, uh, we'll call a question, please, Andy.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisen.
Yes.
Yes. To the next one.
One, one of the areas, uh, when S R three is released. There is a requirement that you hold twenty percent of that funds back for. Social emotional. And to address any possibility of learning loss. But that's, that's after the pot of money I'm waiting for the, to be released from the state now. So. We had hoped that I'd have a conversation with Mr. Renwick, we had hoped that we could really expand summer school. This summer. And I'm not surprised. That it's not really something that's within our reach to be able to expand the number of weeks we offer summer school. The nice thing is that money, that S R money, doesn't go away at the end of this year, it's not a use of this year, or it's gone, we still have access to it. So, that we can look at. Expanding on summer school. In the summer of twenty-two. One of the things that we have done. Is if we don't have enough staff. Our own staff, we, we try to hire teachers from other districts that might be looking, uh. We've offered it up to our interns that are currently there, they'll be licensed teachers this summer, so they could, they could teach summer school. If they're not on our salary schedule anywhere. Uh, like to offer at least twenty-five dollars an hour. For their services, or anyone that is a non-staff member, teaching our students summer school. That tends to be, uh, we, we were, we have been at twenty dollars an hour for several summers. Uh, twenty-five kind of puts us back on to par with a lot of other districts around us. Here's, um. This is in the finance committee, that's, you, you mentioned calling it like a doubles session?
Yes.
Can you? Summer school typically.
Explain what that means?
Summer school is typically three weeks long? Okay, so we were hoping to expand that in those six weeks. Okay, uh, try to, you know, do some enrichment and hands-on, and then do some remedial. Okay, uh, try to, you know, do some enrichment and hands on, and then do some remedial and jumpstart. Hope my timeline.
No, sorry. It's my alarm to wake up.
So, so we are hoping to be able to expand the summer school offerings and the number of hours that we had students engaged in summer school. We don't have the staff available to do that. So we're looking to try to do a three week session, which will be held in this building due to construction. And it will be end of July, first part of August, like July twenty sixth through August twelfth will be the three weeks. And try to use that as a little bit of a jumpstart for the upcoming school year. So.
So you're still planning on holding a six week session, but maybe a three week session?
Okay.
And the three weeks gonna focus more on remediation instead of enrichment and like elective?
It'll be a combination of both, Matt, would you like to address that?
Yeah, we're trying to plan it in the summer. No problems.
Sure.
Three hours, same concept, too. It's more active than a focus, I believe. We'll turn you over, or go ahead, take a little bit of all of that some time. That practice is in those skills and strategy, but also bringing in some of the.
And that's, it's kind of similar to what has happened in the past when summer school could happen earlier in July. That was kind of a combination. There'd be some reading and math instruction specific, and then, you know, uh, an opportunity for some hands on, some creativity kinds of things. You know, favorite project or, you know, area to to focus on is what we've done in the past. And you're, yeah, a double session, we're hoping to do three weeks, and then come back with another three week session. We're only up able to offer one three week session right now.
I've interviewed, uh, the speak for some external teachers to, to, uh. Big old staff.
And many districts, so I, you know, if you find somebody from another district, you're, you're a lucky man, because I've talked to other superintendents, and they're having the same, same issues of this, this, this is a really difficult summer, coming off of an extremely difficult school year to say, yeah, I'd love to do some more of this over the summer. A lot of, a lot of staff members, a lot of districts are looking for an opportunity to recharge over this coming summer.
Increasing the hourly rate, you said it was from twenty to twenty five?
It puts us on par with most districts around that that do something like that.
Okay, but that's a twenty five percent hourly increase. That's a, that's a big bump. Um, when you say puts us on par with, like, with the other rural schools, or are we talking Madison and then the?
Schools are.
We do get state aid on the enrollment for summer school, Mitch?
Yes.
And in the past, has that been enough to offset the cost of our summer school?
Yes. We we, we typically have been able to pick up about nine students. And we, that that's hundred thousand dollars for us.
Mm hmm.
So that, that covers the cost of the instruction.
Is there any reason to believe it shouldn't be the same this summer?
I I think there's a, I think there's a, a strong interest in summer school from the parents' perspective. So I think, I think we'll have a lot of interest in getting students here. We'll be able to run our typical summer camps, which also tend to generate a lot of student interest. That helps with our instructional hours as well as, as long as they're staffed by a licensed teacher, we can count those minutes as instruction as well.
I didn't know if you knew that, like, affect the baseball camps, football camps, that's all included in the summer school.
That's interesting. I did not know that that.
If, if it's tied by a licensed teacher. Without.
Yeah.
And and for the the state reimbursement, how many kids do you mean for one full time student?
Forty, forty thousand eight hundred minutes or forty, it it's a, it's an awful lot of minutes.
It was by the minutes.
Yeah. Of summer school that breaks it down into one FTE student. But typically, we have, you know, typically, we're getting reimbursement for about nine students on a year to year. Last year was not a good year for us, obviously. Uh, and there's still some things potentially pending. Uh, the government, governor proposed in his budget allowing us to use our summer school enrollment from either or of the last two years, whichever was higher. But that's put on hold right now as they go through their budget negotiation process. Uh, and typically, we're, we're getting aid for on average about nine students each year.
I'll move to approve the summer school rate scale.
They really second that?
No, second.
Any more discussion?
Just, just for reference, double summer school is part of that process, so. Three years here, that pain. That's one.
Uh, we'll call the question, please, Angie.
Done.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Smithy.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Hammer.
Yes. On item seven, approval of Upland Hills Health twenty one through twenty twenty four.
We we have some services provided, occupational therapy and physical therapy are provided for some of our students through Upland Hills Health. So we're at currently at the end of a three year contract and, uh, questions, I would throw it to Angie Klein to potentially answer any of those questions that you might have. There is an increase, uh, the previous contract for occupational therapy was forty one dollars an hour. And this contract has an increase to forty four dollars an hour, so a seven point three percent increase. Uh, and physical occupational speech therapist in our previous contract was sixty three dollars an hour. And the request is to move it to sixty seven seventy five or a seven point five percent increase. If you take that over three years.
These hourly rates would be locked in for three years?
Yes.
He is paying somebody forty dollars an hour plus my, to drive typical earnings for me.
Yeah. I I think there are very comparable costs, you know, who were to look at contacting the CISA services, that could be a potential option. And from my experience, the hospital will be way better based overall than CISA.
So we're paying the sixty seven dollars an hour, including their travel costs?
We have for the past three years, yeah. So that contract started in two thousand.
I will entertain a motion to approve this, so we can have some discussion. So, okay, every second. Yeah, open for discussion.
And of course, this is all offset by. Is it fund twenty seven?
Muddies, muddies come through fund twenty seven to pay for this, because this is all special education services. So we get some reimbursement, twenty eight cents on the dollar.
Gotcha.
Again, the governor's budget proposal was to increase that, which would certainly help us. But yes, there, there is reimbursable monies through IDA.
On an annual basis, do you have any idea of what this contract runs us per year?
I do not. I would have to ask Marcia what, what we would pay, since it's two different rates based on the number of students and hours that we would need them. And we're not, we're not talking an eight hour a day position either. Angie, can you?
I'm going back to the, I know from last year, um, it's actually based on the number of certain students who receive that service, but we do, we do kind of push the same number ahead with a little bit of a buffer. So whatever she builds into the budget, you know, they bill us monthly. So we're able to see that expense, but I don't have it on the, I don't have to go back to Marcia as well.
But as far as like days of the week?
Um, the physical therapist is here, I believe, three half days or the equivalent of two full days, might be here all day on one day. And then the occupational therapist is here for sure, one day a week, and that occupational therapist assistant is here for sure, one day a week, and they might have some overlap on Thursday. So.
Under the bill's print payable in this boardroom, we paid Upland Hills Health eighty nine ninety one last month.
That may be quarterly to.
Oh, it says March therapy services.
Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't sorry, I didn't know quarterly or.
But these are ser- these are services that we we need to provide to our students, and in all honesty, if we were to hire someone full time to do this, we we would not be, we would not paying this, since this has.
And years ago, you did have services full time, because I know I contracted services from you, and at some point, we realized it wasn't entirely responsible to hire someone themselves that came to benefit, but it was more costly.
Any more discussion or questions?
I'll just say, I don't work for Upland Hills Health, but these therapists take care of a lot of my patients, and they're extremely high quality group, so I I can't speak to other facilities, organizations, but this is a good group that we're hiring.
I'm, I'm not thrilled about paying somebody to that that hourly rate for the drive time, so, but I, there's not, I don't see a better solution. I guess I'm grateful that we're as close to the hospital as we are, and that we're not paying, you know, an hour each way, hopefully fifty minutes.
Somebody from Madison or of you, it would be.
Yeah.
A completely different story.
And I still require any excuses, but, you know, they have a fixed cost for that employee.
Yeah.
So somebody has to cover their account on this.
And I do think that's why the hospital is a better deal for us than like CISA, because CISA, you are obligated with I time. That's pretty common whether your contract is related with whatever company that does, door to door is doing.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. If there's no more, we will call the question, please.
Done.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Smithy.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Hammer.
Yes. On item eight, approval of the sixty six point zero three zero one in Creighton, Iowa Grant School District.
This is a yearly contract that we, uh, our agreement we have between the Iowa Grant School District and the Middle Point School District for a speech and language pathologist. Uh, up until three years ago, we held the contract. Uh, and then the Iowa Grant School District needed more of the services than than we did. So we were willing to, uh, transfer who holds the contract. So basically, we pay for thirty percent of the positions, a hundred percent position share between the two school districts. Iowa Grant utilizes seventy percent of this contract, and the Middle Point School District reimburses the Iowa Grant School District for thirty percent of the, or of the cost.
Any questions? Any questions, concerns, comments?
So this is speech and language, and what we just approved is.
OT.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything else. Anything? Oh, okay, we'll call the question, please, Angie.
Buck.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Smithy.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yeah.
Solomon.
Yes.
Hammer.
Yes. Uh, on item number nine, ending elementary school early.
The school district's last day of school is May twenty first. The construction company is starting early in the cafeteria area and would like to get into the main part of the remodel as soon as possible. Yes, I know it's our building, and yes, I would love to have our building back on September first. And they had brought up the idea, is there any way, is there any way to go virtual the last two weeks of the school year, so we could get into the school building early? I said, ah, no, that's not possible. Talking with the elementary staff about the possibility needing to move their things, items out of the classrooms. Because when I spoke with Eric, the site superintendent for Craymers, their plan is to get in, he's going to, they're gonna start in the office. One crew will then go through the building and remove all of the ceiling, so that they can get to any ductwork, plumbing work in the ceilings. Soon as they're out, they'll, they'll start downstairs, go through the downstairs, and then go upstairs. As soon as they're out, another crew will come in and start to remove the walls. And once the walls are out, then they'll be able to get to the floor and get underneath the building to find out and and address that, that area of concern. A suggestion to end the school year for the elementary students, to have their last day be the eighteenth of May. Coincides with, uh, final exam week up here, and the the use of the two ten plan. We have several student groups that have been approached that, advisors had said, well, as long as the students are still at school, I have a lot of control over being able to volunteer some time to help move the classrooms out. So it is a proposal before the board to look at ending the elementary students' school year on the eighteenth of May. Staff would still report, middle school, high school would still be here till the twenty first as the regular schedule.
I have two questions. One is, um, can you talk a little bit about the hour requirements for the school year for elementary school versus middle school, high school, and whether we're gonna be within the hours of instruction required by EPI for elementary school, even within the early, and even with the hybrid and virtual instruction time that's been in the school year?
There will be a slight adjustment that, uh, I talked with Lard versus our early childhood. There would be a slight adjustment that she would make in her schedule, uh, but other than that, we would meet all of the requirements. Uh, the elementary school has considerably less required hours of instruction versus Ms. Lawrence.
Okay, my second question is, maybe for Mr. Renwick, that's basically, uh, how will this impact just kind of the, the academic schedules of the fourth quarter in terms of, you know, content goals, curriculum goals? That kind of thing, from your teacher's perspective?
I haven't had feedback, the burden of this, maybe, you know, early in the history, we've really haven't had any feedback. I don't know, Lard, have you heard anything? Did we get any process, uh, covered? No, these are the last couple of days, you're typically, you're, you feel true, some type of grade capability. Do like, uh, all have a field day, Monday, with the all outside activities as well, too. So it's kind of end of year celebration, the last one or two days. Right now, like, we did end on the eighteenth, I would still have that field day opportunity for the kids to be outside and have a good time and be active that day. At least for a couple hours. But I don't see that as a negative. Because, I mean, early.
I'd like to ask a question, why we're not tying this into the five day per week school and talking about the elementary. Uh, if we're gonna end it potentially early, would it be better impetus to consider the five day week until they're out on the eighteenth? Um, that would solve some of the talent requirements, perhaps? And, uh, it sounds. And, um, it sounds like they have enough interns and people, I'm not sure, I, I guess it rests the math. Um, how that would work, if it would work, uh, to go back five days and then, and then it seems just as hypothetical.
When you calculated the hours, which is four days, we're currently in. We're out, and it's still doing that threshold?
Yes.
When you're calculating hours, how are Wednesdays counted, or how are the, the days that have been virtual?
Uh, instruction, uh. Is happening, and therefore we can count hours of instruction on those days.
I spoke with the consultant at the DPI and. We can count hours even if they're days in for this, so if it's planned prior and it's more self-directed, you know, on, on, on the website. We can count a number of hours through the schedule we created. Maybe it'd be very low.
So to go back over through discussion with the contractor Mitch, is there a specific reason they need to get into the building three days early to meet their?
They, they would not get into the building three days early, it would give the staff. An opportunity to move their classroom materials with volunteers out of those rooms, so that, so Kramer's would not be starting on the nineteenth. It would be, it would be allowing staff and students, student volunteers to move. Desks, books, resources out of classrooms and get out of those areas that will be. Demolished.
So was this a request not from Kramer's then?
To be able to start on. Monday, the twenty-fourth of May is what they would really like to do, and in order to try to help accommodate that, we need to get out of. Those locations.
So let's be this, so let's say. We end the school year as scheduled. And then the teachers still need. Two, three, four days to clean out their entire classroom and reorganize and get all of that ready. Would that be above and beyond their contracted time? In other words. If we end the school year as scheduled, will we be paying teachers so many days of overtime pay to. Prepare their, their classroom for the remodel project?
That would be a possibility, yes.
So, knowing that, it's, as Mr. Hong shared, knowing that that last week of school is usually, uh, a little bit celebratory anyway. Is, could, could there be a consideration to maybe? I mean, I'd still like to have the four or five-day-a-week discussion, but go Monday and Tuesday of that week and have that celebratory feel and then have that Tuesday. Be the final day, and then the teachers would have three days potentially, and, and maybe with the help of high school students to.
That's what, that's the proposal, I think.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it was Monday.
Monday is the seventeenth, Tuesday is eighteen.
I apologize, I was, I was off on my dates.
So it was, that was brought up to have. Uh, you've got some teachers living in those classrooms for thirty years, just a lot of stuff. And it's, but. You know, Tuesday, I had, the day was Tuesday. The, the Tuesday after school.
Tuesday after school.
Yeah, it was three days.
Is there any reason they can't start moving things out that they don't maybe need, like?
Tomorrow? And first, once we get, once we get approval from Kramer's that, because we have talked to them about, okay, at three-thirty at night. When there's not instruction happening, although they, they were going till six o'clock tonight right now, putting the glass in, but. You know, when, when there's nobody else in there, can we get into the gymnasium and start to slowly do that process and. Uh, once we get approval from Kramer's, we can start that. I don't, I don't, can't say that we'll start tomorrow, but Tom, we had a conversation.
We just heard an update. I know, we're waiting for the update from HSR to, for sprinklers, insurance. Um, as of, the other day, Dan, Dave and I, uh, almost had the whole gym floor covered with the, covering the protector. Uh, that we laid down, uh, we still got to mark out each classroom. Once it's approved from HSR and insurance. We can start hauling things in, but it's going to be only certain few, like Danvers and myself, that can go in there, raises still construction. But we still have a lot of stuff, because basically every classroom has to be cleared if it's in the classroom. After May twenty-fourth, it's gone, it's garbage, we won't see it again. So bulletin boards, smart boards, bookshelf, books, desks, tables, everything has to be out of that room. You know, with May twenty-fourth. And it's, I moved my entire bias up, took me about all day. For one whole day, just moving everything out. And that was a lot of easy stuff, carrying and everything else, but just the amount of stuff that has to go, and now you think about. Going down the elevator, a lot of things. Just the amount of time that's going to take to go from upstairs, downstairs, in the gym, stack it away, hopefully somewhat organized. So in the fall, when we come back in, we have some organization of what room is the go-to, who room is this? I mean, just a, a lot of moving parts that's going to take a lot of time and effort, not just from a few, from a lot.
And we know that in the fall and from that, we may be limited on time to unpack, so we need to. Do this in an organized way, so when we do get approval to go back in and fall, it can go quickly. So it can't just be a, start moving stuff, I mean, that has to be in an organized fashion and. There's a lot of stuff that has to be moved.
Some of that stuff probably doesn't need to go back though, am I correct there? I mean, with different layouts and. You know, so maybe things that could maybe start to go home, just maybe start picking at it, just an idea.
They've started doing some of that now.
Yeah.
So, I, I feel. That, Lindsay, you alluded to this, but I feel like this conversation goes hand-in-hand with the four or five days a week. In my mind, I'm going, could we go five days a week starting next week, knowing that we're going to take those three days off at the end, that we'll be out on Tuesday and. And give up those last three days?
You can certainly table this topic and go to the next action item, which is that four, so we're named four, go five days and then come back to. The end of the school year, that's certainly within your. Authority to do something of that nature.
Don't we have to make a motion to that?
We have to make a motion.
I just have a, a comment. I, I, I find it. Um, intriguing that we're having this conversation. Now, I mean, we, we started this whole remodel process a couple of years ago, and this. Two weeks ago was the first I've ever heard of it, and that, that we need to take three days off during the school year to accommodate. Um, for, for moving and I. I. If, if it was a, if it was a normal year, a typical year, and snow days weren't an issue. Yeah, I could see maybe giving up a day or two, but, but these kids have given, given up so much, um, first semester, uh, throughout the whole school year, last. Oh, the last quarter of last, the last school year. Um. I don't, I don't think we ought to hold anything hostage over. Going five days versus taking three days off during the school year. I, I think that, that just looks bad. I'd like to see our kids at school. Five days and, uh, at least to the, to the first.
Does, does. Our staff being, being out of the building and ready to go on the twenty-fourth, give us any guarantee around being back in the building by September one?
No, they, they, they'll never come out and say. If you give us this, we'll, we guarantee that, that, that's, that's not going to happen.
It was still a rather chance.
It improves the chances, but there, there's no way they'll say, if we get this, then you get that out.
So we, we do have a Saturday and Sunday buffer. Now, I, I know the sun that, you know, I swear words when it comes to working, but. Oh, Gary and I, we work Saturday and Sundays. Year, year-round, and if it's raining that day, there's nothing saying I can't come in, we tell the staff to move out on Saturday or Sunday.
All right, I will entertain a motion to do something here, whether it's table, I move on to ten.
I make a motion to table this item under ten.
Okay? Would anybody like to second that motion? He wants to go from nine to ten.
Or else.
Okay.
Or to twelve, I'm sorry, to twelve.
Twelve.
Visit.
Tennis for this year, twelve is for next.
All right, ten. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second to table and then return to.
No.
I think you're correct.
It's not what the board looks at. Twelve, sorry, twelve is this year and ten is next year. Okay.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
My.
Didn't read that part. So table nine to go to twelve?
What would be the, what would be the best motion here procedurally to move twelve? Up above nine?
Sure.
Would that be the best motion, or should we, can we table?
We've been talking on number nine, I would table nine and move twelve. Or, or you could simply say I would like to address item number twelve. Even that's not a very arranged agenda.
President.
Okay. If that's what you want to do, Doc, we will, uh, we will table number nine and we'll move to, um, item number twelve. Let me just do that. Okay, that's what we're going to do. Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so now we will, number twelve, return to five days per week of instruction for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year.
Just, just as part of the discussion, I think we ought to separate it off the elementary versus high school personally. Are you saying why, why?
Yeah.
Doesn't the interns need?
Well, I think, I think the elementary is well-suited to return five days. School, I'd have to hear more about whether the high school is. Uh, able to do that, because don't they have a higher percentage of virtual students in the? High school, higher percentage?
All right.
All right, now. So it's switched now.
It's about, it's, I think you have thirty now. Second year is about, uh, twenty-seven.
That's, that's just a discussion. I need more information on the high school, so.
Okay, let's start the discussion. Say we want to have a, make a motion to return five days per week.
Scott, a question, how did this get on the agenda?
Returning five days a week? Um.
Per request.
Okay. Hey. The request was made, um, Nate made pass along me to add it to the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we return five days a week.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. We're open for discussion.
That's, that's in all buildings, right, Larry?
Correct.
Yeah.
The, the question is starting Wednesday or? Is that, is that kind of on the table?
Probably, I haven't, I haven't, yeah, it's not on the table, unless you make it into your motion, Larry.
We have to try and start, start the day, starting week.
I would say, um. What's today the twelfth? Twelve, yeah, so thirteen to fourteen.
Mr. Austin, are you planning on having a group in, what, this Wednesday to test?
Not this Wednesday, it is on next Wednesday, we have freshman aspire testing next week, Wednesday, we also have a. Junior, senior service day that day, usually new, new service day, uh, high school this year we do one, we're trying to get back to some normal activities initially, just for the junior senior one. Um, we have some different activity, we're going to keep working on that. Uh, so some different spots are on, a couple of spots up here to kind of school stuff and things before graduation, so typically, that's generally what we do. With the service day, so freshmen have a testing on that, the twenty-first, Wednesday to twenty-fourth.
I just didn't know if there was. A week to get on this week before you made, before you made any changes.
But it is next week, Washington. A part of that is, the problem is taking up the gym right now, we couldn't test it yet, so that's why it's next week, not this week.
I got some very helpful emails from parents on this issue. I got some, I got a helpful summary and recommendation from Mr. Redwick. I'd like to hear what you guys think as far as. Frozen terms or how you feel about going five days a week, starting as soon as this week?
Well, we did, um, set up our virtual students for taking state assessments on Wednesdays and also felt that as a, as a makeup day for. For some of our students who, who miss testing. I know my staff feels strongly about that Wednesday and, you know, meeting with the virtual students. So, um, I, I haven't changed from my previous stance on this.
I would echo the same thoughts. Uh, I mean, it is a lot of work and it looks different from last spring, so yes, we got a virtual learning last spring. It looks different than what it did last spring until now, so it's still a lot of work. To change things over for those students. We may see an increase by the slow, due to spring sports, I don't really know yet, uh, right now it's not a huge number, but. Yeah, we may see an increase, so, so, spring sports start next week. We have five spring sports, so we may see an increase to that, I don't know for sure. Um, but I would agree, my, I would think my staff would still value that Wednesday pretty well, um, but they're good. If they're all, they're all either, either back to normalcy at some point, so, but I would echo the same thought.
Is it, is it possible to? Um, make accommodations for student testing while still within session? In terms of space and proctoring?
Well, the, the classroom teacher would not be able to proctor. They, they, they write classes.
Right.
So we'd have to make accommodations for somebody else to proctor the class.
How is it done in your respects?
Uh, for makeups?
Well, for the proctor.
Oh, they, it's all, it's always in-class.
Oh, I see, so this, yeah, this.
Right, and the DPI now is requiring that virtual students have to come into school to test, it can't, can't be done virtually.
So how are makeup tests done in the past then?
Um, usually, like, if the teacher had a prep, we'd schedule a makeup test to go into the theater with the prep. Um, if I was available, I proctor or, you know, I, I get another staff and have them proctor.
So how, how many students are in the grades? How many students are impacted by needing to come in and test?
Um, in middle school, we don't have as many that are impacted as the elementary school has more students. We, we had a number, um. Popped out. So right now, I've got, I've got eight, I have eighth grade student and I have two, two sixth grade students. But there are some students that opt, that opted out. One had opted out because there was a family issue with, with COVID and they wouldn't be available to come in for a couple of weeks.
So, so it's really three kids, at, at the middle school level, we're talking about proctoring tests for two kids?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say this, when I reached out to three specific high school teachers in February, the only reason that they wanted to stay Wednesdays was because of the kids and athletics. They wanted to be teaching five days a week in person, but at that time, all the kids athletic that they wanted, and I respected them. We also had teachers whom emailed us in December in support of going five days a week. You know, so we sit here and we hear them, we have not been reached out to, we were reached out to, I reached out to people. The efforts were made, the comments were made. Now, I could stand there and tell which teachers I talked to. The two of them specifically said they didn't want the names to be bought up because they don't want their peers to look different upon it. And I find that to be pretty disappointing in this public school that you can't have a different opinion from the rest of the staff and you get looked upon differently. And all we heard back then was, was it safe to be in school? Last month, stress. Now we got, we hear about the renovation project. The renovation project, we all knew was going to happen, we keep hearing excuses.
Yes, I'll speak, um, whether it's considered an excuse or, or. Um, we received a few emails, kind of characterizing our, our past comments as. You know, the teachers, it was too much for the teachers, this and that, and, and really a lot of the conversation last week. Was about the virtual students and the requirement we have to also give them. Good education, you know, an opportunity. And whether that number is five percent or seven percent or, or eight percent, there are students too. And as long as we're offering that to them. I'm going to continue to, to support offering them a day to actually have one-on-one to the teacher. And not have an entirety of, of synchronous learning with no opportunity.
But, yeah.
And we can separate schools, but there are students that in this building that do not have a dedicated. And we can separate schools, but there are students that in this building that do not have a dedicated teacher. And who would not be getting the same educational. So if we want to separate schools and, and knowledge school has that, and teachers, I can, I, I can. Entertain that, but, but I just don't think we are doing right by those students to give them a shot. And I understand we are taking, you know, six hours away from ninety-three percent, but, but these are students who. That don't have any direct contact. That's what that might say, even if that violates the virtual students' opportunity for giving them to actually have direct teacher interaction. So that's why I'm gonna support, support that idea.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in this aspect because we're asked to kind of end the elementary school year early to accommodate movement of materials. And make an earlier access for Kramer. And I, I think the elementary really could go to. Five days a week without, in my mind. A question, it's, uh, I still have questions about the high school. I, I would like to separate out schools' systems, and I don't know if that'll affect the bus routes and things like that, I just, I don't know.
What's your concern about the high school level, just the amount of virtual students?
Well, I think some of what Andy said is true, and I'm not sure about spring sports, whether that's gonna result in, you know, you're gonna come, and then they've got, I mean. This requirement of in-person testing. And then Wednesday allows that access, those are the items that I'm concerned about high school.
Another thing that I've heard is that, uh, some of these older high school kids, uh, you know, they may be doing some school first few hours of the day or whatever, and then. They're being hired for work. You know, that afternoon or the rest of the day. And. Um, not that that's an excuse and they shouldn't be in the classroom, but I, I'm wondering Larry, if he would be willing to maybe. Push it to next week, not only to allow those, you know, that to be sorted out, but allow the. Everything to be kind of sorted out as far as, there's probably plans for virtual Wednesday already and just, just, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that. Cause I'm, I'm leaning towards spring, but I feel like two days with all these wild cards and I can be a little hesitant.
Well, before we talk about that, I'm gonna touch on, um, what Mr. Austin was saying about spring sports and possibility of more students.
Yeah.
You know what, at some point. We gotta, we gotta go with what, we're, we're, we're gonna get, uh, the most bang for our buck. And is it, is it academics or is it sports? And it's warming up outside, um. I, I don't know if there's gonna be an increased caseload or, or not, but, uh, I, I can't, I can't justify that reason.
No, no, I'm just putting that out there.
I, I understand.
I'm not saying that's.
And I, and I have been told, now I, and I don't know, but there are some kids on virtual because of prom.
Is that, that a fact?
Not mine, not at all.
Okay.
Not, not, not to my, I don't have anybody that knows.
Um, so, I'm gonna put that aside, um, to, to the point of starting next Wednesday versus this Wednesday. It doesn't sound like there's any wide-based testing taking place this Wednesday. Um.
There isn't. These tests, remember these tests were third grade. Through.
Is that, is that the entire third grade or just virtual?
It's just the virtual.
Okay.
On Wednesdays, all, all third graders have to take the exam.
So, I mean, could, could you segregate the library, man, put the kids, uh, uh, six feet apart in the library, social distance, mask on, of course. And. Give the test even on Wednesdays after two o'clock. I mean, I guess they come to school somewhere, they attend physically in, in building.
Where you have something.
I have, I have seven virtual kids coming to me on Wednesday for work day assessment. This will be the first time I've ever been in person with them, and I know many of these families will not have their kids come to school if they have a control center there. This is their only opportunity to come to school and work one-on-one with me, so I can give them a test before the end of the year.
But you don't have to, don't like.
Right, but these families will not come to school if there are three hundred and fifty kids in there. And I have yet to be in person with a single one of those kids, this was. Every kid is excited, I'm excited, and this will be taken away from them.
I'm, I'm just asking the question, could that happen after two o'clock on Wednesday?
I have seven of them, that'll take an hour for them. Individually, ten hours for them.
And the, and these are your recruits for next, next, no?
They are my four K students.
Okay.
Well, have we set it up so that four days has become a new norm and everything is predicated on the four day because of what? Has transpired that we can't switch back, is that what I'm hearing? That's, that's what I wonder, because if that's what it is reported on there. And with testing and things, is it such that we can't switch back combined into? That doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me.
I think the goal at the beginning of the school. Is to get back to school five days. Let's not forget that. Now, we, everybody had a chance to go virtual, obviously, we gave everyone that chance. But even though we knew there were gonna be virtual students, the goal by everybody in this room and all the administrators here, the goal was to be five days a week.
I think my concern ever is just that, you know, everyone's got things scheduled for this Wednesday.
I understand, it's too abrupt, yeah.
It just seems a little too abrupt, and, and, and you're right, I mean, I think that because it's been this way for. The whole second semester, that I think they've been planning things, Wednesdays like testing times and things like that, and. I, I think there can be accommodations made for testing, I agree that, you know, I think a lot of time to. To make that happen, and given all the other stuff, and probably Morgan's issue is just a fifty iceberg is where our things are scheduled.
Right.
I would just support a little, a little more time, but I mean, uh, if motion stands, do motion stands.
I think it is point.
For example, I have a parent coming in to interview. For the summer school condition. I'm distracted, probably not one of his kids will be tested before you, and he's gonna have my marriage. It's gonna be with me all are getting tested, so there's more than this testing. That certainly could be rescheduled, but certainly for this Wednesday.
I mean, we're only talking, are we talking total six Wednesdays now before the end of the school? Counting the fourteenth, counting the Wednesday that. We're talking about handling school, for the elementary school. Those are five.
We six. Four. This, this is, there's six weeks of school remaining. Probably this one.
Okay, so, alright, so if we want to take this Wednesday off and then we take the last Wednesday off, that takes us down to four.
Or you. I'm corrected if I'm misinterpreting, but I think the priority would be, yeah, if you choose. The having those days off at the end. To be able to pack up stuff and. Get ready to be done, you know, it's, you know. It's the priority, even above Wednesdays. But I'd be inaccurate saying that before you to talk. That's not okay, well, this. Look at the twenty first of May, and. I'm afraid to say there's not gonna be a lot of teachers that came in on Saturday and Sunday to wanna move the entire room. It's gonna be hard to, I mean, a lot of teachers aren't gonna wanna lift a desk and figure down. And if I talk to Roger, he, it's gonna take him three or four days if not more to move with his gender staff. At my school.
I know it's wishful thinking here, but I see it as a community effort. Everybody always wants to help and volunteer their time, but again, people's, you know, definitely talk and they don't actually do, so. I guess that's my hopes, whatever role we take here, that, uh, our, people are watching, maybe show up that day. Um. Okay, so, we've got a motion on the table to go back to school. Starting five days a week, starting this Wednesday, or this, starting this week, correct Larry?
Correct.
You have a second? We've had a second, carry a second of that. Um, is there any more discussion on? This motion?
That's the start, the fourteenth.
That's to start going back this Wednesday, five days, or this week, five days a week.
No, no, then we're going to address, we're gonna back to the.
We'll go back to the.
Depending on.
Yeah, depending on what happens here.
Will we have lunches with it?
We don't have it scheduled right now. Right now it's not scheduled for one.
And I agree with Aaron, it seems a little abrupt.
We don't have.
I think, I think I'm more supportive to you.
I, I will vote backwards and.
I just, I just wrote on, mentioned it, for, uh, maybe then we can, we'll go back and make a different motion.
Okay.
I mean, plain agreement.
We can do that, uh, any more discussion on this motion? No, call the question please, Andy.
Stefan.
Yes, sorry.
Bush.
No.
Dan.
No.
Eisenberg. No.
Lindsey.
No, it's too abrupt.
And Oliver.
Yes.
Amber.
No. Yeah. I want to take another motion.
Nate, I make a motion that the elementary school returns to five days a week, starting on.
We did the twenty first.
And start for Wednesday, the twenty first being the first Wednesday. And goes through. Goes to school through the Wednesday, the nineteenth.
Okay, would anybody like to second that?
I will second that.
So are you saying that? Elementary would not go to school Thursday, Friday?
Elementary would not go to school Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
Allowing staff. Two days to clear their rooms and hopefully have some support from. If we'll service project kids.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table, would anybody like to second Joni's motion?
I second it.
Just for a point, are we gonna go back and vote on, on the school really then?
This is, she's.
She's tied in.
She's got it tied down.
I don't know that I can believe that, can I? This is a different.
I can go through the twenty, uh. What is that Wednesday, Joni?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
No, no, well, Joni, I mean, what you could do is. Just say, I, I like where you're going with it, but I think, um. You just say back to, back to school, starting the week of the twenty first through the end of the school year, and then we determine what the end of the school year is.
I, I amend my motion to state, return to school five days a week. Starting April twenty first through the end of the school year.
In a second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this? Call the question please.
Eisenberg. Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bush.
No.
Dan.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes. And we'll go back to.
What?
Do you want to make a decision on middle school, high school?
Yes, sorry, that was just.
We, I, I specified elementary, I'd love somebody else to take a stab at the middle school, high school.
I'll take that week. Next Wednesday, what is the date again?
I believe it is the.
We get back for the twenty first.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, we turn five days, we started the twenty first.
Middle school, high school.
Middle school, high school.
The same motion, yes, middle school, high school.
Yes.
We've got a motion on the table, anybody like to second?
I'll second it.
I'm just about to discuss the high school, middle school.
I, I just want like one, but we do have a test, just so you're well aware, and the community service day, just. Just saying, not that.
There'll be kids out about for.
Right, there'll be, there'll be, they'll be here. Soft on the class, it's kind of a reminder that.
So, for me, the part that continues to give me pause at the, um, middle school, high school level is, is not so much the testing, we, uh, particularly at the middle school level, we, we. Cut that down to just three, fascinating to proctor. But at the elementary school, we know that students who are learning virtual, reading, it, pretty much across the board have one-on-ones or have a. Direct teacher support through the interns and, and the other things that are in place. I, my understanding is that at the middle school and high school level, we don't have that same type of support, so. I, I'm not saying I, I won't support this, but I'd like to share a little bit more about how that can work.
We still, I mean, we still have kids coming in every Wednesday all day.
Can you give us a number? I have it down to twenty, twenty-five, our third quarter DF report, though, we're down to seven. The, the Wednesday thing has helped us catch those kids back up from first, first semester like we talked about, and also kept that number down really quick.
How many of those are virtual now?
How many of those are virtual, James?
You said you've got twenty-five coming in twenty, twenty, twenty to twenty-five.
So those are the kids that are on that DF.
Yep, how many are?
Well. Of the virtual.
Are any of them coming in?
There are some, yep, yep, they're coming in to take tests, they're coming in to do some things directly with the teachers, so there is no comfort thing for them, but. Um, I do know that number, I just, again, to share that, we have doubt that that number's gotten really, so.
Question about, like, sorry, we have about fifteen in the first school. Okay, new things. Um, during study hall, RTI, same time, is there? Do virtual kids zoom in or, um, I mean, are the teachers? Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're available. For any kid that needs help in that room, you, you, can virtual kids.
They certainly could help.
Join in or like, let's say the science teacher has a RTI, you know, and, and the virtual kids struggling with science, say, hey. He needs seventh hour on Zoom, and we go over a couple of things, maybe, is that something that's either happening or could happen?
They are, oh yeah, they are tired, they're sitting on the computer all day, but yes, it could theoretically happen, yes. So, not that that's not happening at times, but.
Right.
Any of those that are staring at a screen, uh, it's actually a fact.
Right, right.
Yeah, the other kids on Wednesday's test, things like that as well.
When a, when a high school student has a study hall, it does not necessarily need that, that a subject-oriented teacher is free at the same time. So if I, if I'm having trouble in science and I've got a third hour science question, and that's my, third hour's my study hall, when I have. Right, you've got Syncox or Mr. Stagg.
They might be available at that time.
Yeah, they might both be teaching, that, that's, that's a little more difficult because in the high school you have. Two hundred plus, potentially two hundred plus different schedules. You know, or, you know, when it. At lower grade, grade levels, that isn't necessarily the case.
Uh, another thing that's crossing my mind, a diff, a difference between elementary and, and the, that building versus this building is. In my mind at least, when there is a, a positive case in, in an elementary school classroom, that classroom. All is considered close contact, they all go home, but that, that classroom teacher is continuing to, to instruct those students. In the high school, I think close contacts are, um, are, are based on who's sitting around that student, and so the teacher is. Uh, still going to be instructing here with a portion of their students remote. Um. And that, that just, to me, that feels a, a little messier. But again, I'm certainly open to the other points of view, if somebody's got them.
So, we've got a motion, second correct? Is there any more discussion, questions on this for administration? If not, we'll call the question please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bush.
No.
Dan.
Yes.
Eisenberg. No. Lindsey.
No.
Stefan.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Which passes. Uh, we'll go back to number nine, ending elementary school year early.
I think we have elementary school on the eighteenth, is that correct?
That is the number that they request.
Eighteenth is Tuesday, nineteenth is Wednesday.
Oh, nineteen, nineteen, sorry.
That would be the last date. Okay.
You're proposing the nineteenth be the last day, Amber, okay.
Okay, we've got a motion, would anybody like to second Dr. Lindsay's motion?
I'll say it.
Yeah, motion and a second, would we like to have a discussion on this, why or why not to end on the nineteenth?
So they'd be in school on the nineteenth, correct, which is the Wednesday, correct, okay, so two days.
Yep, two days, normal Wednesdays, but I'm more early release, so they've done it too. Um, still gives the teachers a, a winnow at least, so that it, it's not just the weekend to prep their rooms. So it's a compromise between. Where we started and, and yes.
Yeah, got a motion and a second, is there any more conversation? And on May nineteenth? For the elementary school.
Elementary school only, right?
Yes.
We've got some high school, middle school kids out there.
That Thursday, Friday, it's that finals?
Yep.
So, on the Georgia. Students will, will not be at high school.
They'll be volunteering their services.
So they're required to do that.
I've, I've asked theirs.
So any older brothers and sisters who are in charge of the three kids who are now sending home?
I've asked, I've asked clubs and organizations and sports teams.
I mean, are we offering that out there?
I would say yes. I would say yes.
Now requiring a babysitter for it. I mean, I know that there's certainly some families that rely on. High school students too much.
They're probably making sure their high school students are here every day, at school every day. And not having to take physical services.
So I'd be my own cabinet, I'd be all those students. Sisters to be with.
So you're talking about it. Real, very good point, the two temp hall. Is that what you're talking about?
That's how they would not.
In school.
Take me.
Right.
But then most of the time against the clubs and organizations, we're gonna hold.
Yep.
At the elementary school. I'm just asking. Older siblings of students who are not on having it school that day. That has changed to. What, require two more days of channeling?
You're looking at what?
And I, I think that us having this conversation now too gives families time to have those conversations. As opposed to waiting if we're having this conversation in our next meeting.
Okay. So, got a motion and a second. Any more conversation? Let's call the question, please, Angie.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
No.
Solomon.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes. Now, we'll go back to. Number ten. Five days per week, uh, school for twenty-one, twenty-two season, school year.
Wouldn't this be better addressed um, later?
We want.
Probably guys, guys to move.
Right now.
I make a motion. I, I make a motion that we have five days a week school for the twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two school year.
Some in-person learning.
Of in-person learning. No virtual option.
I would just like to have the addendum, if, if, if there's no. Untoward events or something, I mean, some sort of opt-out, I mean, that would be statewide, though, wouldn't it, that, that, it would, so we don't have to worry about that.
Or the board, the board can take that.
Board will take that, okay.
So everybody has a plan.
Stay darned, ten for the next.
I second the motion.
Doctor Lindsay, you're in the best. Okay, we've got a motion and a second for five days per week next year. With no virtual option.
The only caveat I would throw in would be to say, there would be rare circumstances, a student, a student that might have mono. And it needs to be out and doesn't have the stamina to come back to school, we would certainly offer a virtual opportunity there, or if somebody were to contract the virus. And need to stay home, we would offer a virtual option there, but we're not making, the recommendation, we did not make virtual. An option for everybody to choose, that that virtual is only in special circumstances.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I think it's, I think it's also important to recognize that. Things could happen and that, you know, we might have to change based on. You know, how cases are in effecting and what's going on, I don't think it's likely, but I think you just have to recognize that. You know, this is not set in stone, but I think having the intent to do that is very appropriate, and then I think the other thing is just recognizing that. You know, it may, but it, school may not be totally normal, I mean, we may be taking some kind of precautions, depending on what cases are going around, I don't know whether it be spacing or masking or advanced sanitizing or. What, then there's a chance that they're getting that going on too, not that it's relevant to how many days in person, but um. I think just recognizing it, it may not look a hundred percent normal, but uh.
But this is our ten.
But this is our intent, yeah.
This, this approach allows us to focus on what we do best, which is provide world-class in-person education. If there are students who do not want to pursue in-person education, um, it, we would be sad to lose them, but there are other opportunities throughout the state for them to receive a one-hundred percent virtual education. So, I do not think that we are staffed to continue to offer a virtual option long-term. Unless we start impacting either our staffing levels or our class sizes, and I would hate to have to increase the class sizes of our in-person learners in order to continue to support a virtual option.
I also just want to say that all the virtual families right now that are virtual all year, I mean, I think. You know, as the vaccination rates continue to go up and up and up, you know, and high school kids, especially malleable, maybe twelve and up, um, by the fall. Um, really reduces the risk of transmission in the school and the risk of an outbreak and just increases the safety in general for virtual families who are. You know, may be concerned that it may be too premature with the, the vaccination rate, especially how it's going in town, it's very promising.
Uh, we'll call the question, please, Angie.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes. Number eleven, the district mask policy.
The current district mask policy is not tied to. Anything else. You, you establish the mask policy that you put in place and that you would review and you can remove. At no, in no location does it say pending the governor's mask mandate or a state mask mandate or anything of that nature. So your mask policy and state, you have legal authority, I shared with you from uh. The strength Addison Law Firm. In there, I would highlight nothing in the court's decision. Or in the resulting invalidation of the government, governor's state of emergency declaration validates or prohibits local government authorities from issuing face covering requirements. Uh, importantly, this means that the court's decision has no practical effect on local governments, including public school districts. School, it's, school districts derive their authority to implement a face covering from Wisconsin statute section one-twenty point one-three, three-five. That you have the authority, legal authority to set some, any of these kinds of policies at once. We're talking about six weeks of school. We have. Three classrooms at the elementary school currently under quarantine, I, I would strongly encourage you to continue to support the mask. Policy or district max mask policy until the end of the school year at least.
I think the question would continue the mask policy.
It's like a.
Name is where?
So the end of the school year.
There was contact that regarding inequity that policy as it sits. Basically, tempers the baseball team as opposed to all of our other teams who are not playing on school grounds.
I was gonna bring that up.
A policy.
Well, the WIA protocols, spring sport came up, you know, now it's no. Governor man, governor mask mandate. So. Their suggestion is for the players who are competing on the field. They not, are not required to wear masks, but the coaches on the sideline and in the dugout have to wear masks. So does the whole play down. So, but with this mask policy. The baseball field is our facility, so we would be, would we be required for all players on both teams to wear masks, um, all spectators from. Both teams to wear masks?
Well, I, I'd like to comment on that, I think, first, I have to see where the athletes who wear the mask in the dugout. As far as the public. They aren't school grounds, they don't have to wear masks, so I would say that they're on the field playing, they would not have to wear masks. Including the addendum of adding for the school policy.
So if, if, if it's outside and they can socially distance, spectators still have to wear masks?
Well, I, I have to admit, I'm a little disappointed when I see the social distance in, not necessarily here, but. Other places, sporting events, it's, you know. I, I don't see people fully following that myself.
Because like Ian, like Ian.
The concern that was brought to me is that the fan that attends a baseball game has to wear a mask and the fan that attends a softball game has to.
Say, say it again, Angie, was it?
The fan that attends our baseball, home baseball game has to wear a mask.
Uh huh, correct.
Because it's safe, the fan that attends our home softball game has to.
Well, I can say this, I would gladly wear a mask when attending to sporting events in several weeks.
I, I don't disagree. The, the, the concern was the equity between.
Yeah, that, but that doesn't seem right, I mean, as you're pointing out, why aren't we requiring it so?
Well, we could text her too. Thank you.
No, we, we use the, the city park as technically not a.
Oh, I see that part of the school.
And the golf course is not a school facility. And I don't know, does, does the city require to wear a mask out at the parks?
I don't think so.
Well, I can see a problem there, if we're gonna start separating school property, then I, I would say we could investigate the idea of as long as social distance. Outside, you're not gonna wear masks on in-school.
So. How would we, how would we, can we make an exception to the policy, or do we have to change the policy? Can we say the policy does not apply in this situation as a separate?
You certainly can comment, or as just a, like an administrative rule or something? In, in every sports season, you also pass the motion that says, follow the WIA guidelines or, you know, sports recommendations. You know, so you could make the motion, we will, we will maintain the district face mask policy inside the building and follow the WIA guidelines. On any sporting events.
Does the, do the WIA, do the WIA spring sport guidelines make new recommendations for spectators?
Um, they encourage, encourage wearing masks or recommend it unless you can safely social, social distance, and they're obviously encouraging families to.
And it says that in the WIA.
Yeah.
Guidelines.
Yeah. Double check.
So we could. We could modify it to, to do this, but like Angie said, we've got motion and a second to maintain unless we draw that one.
So we, maybe we can make a separate, we can make a separate motion that says that.
For an addendum to.
The WIA guidance, spring sports guidelines apply to. All home spring sport.
To athletics, so pass this one and then go into that.
Before we clean it up, I can withdraw it, and then just later.
The, the only thing is, remember, it, with the, with the WIA, it would just be, if they did recommend masks, it would be for, for the baseball, given the school facility.
So you're saying that softball doesn't count?
Well, it's unfortunate, but it's not, you can't make.
That's true, I mean, I, I agree, I think this mask policy does not apply to non-school property.
Yeah, we just.
But doesn't the WIAA guidelines apply to any sporting event, wherever it's held, regardless of who owns the property? Wherever it's a home event, you know? Really, you know what I mean?
You know, it's like, yes, the, the person called to just say, well, I'm not watching the game, I'm just.
But for the players more so.
But yeah.
You're talking, are you talking for the players, Doc?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about spectators, so if it's. I mean, I think it's sensible to say that you're outdoors and you're with your household and you are distanced from other households outside watching a game. You know, it's only to wear a mask, and I, I think that makes sense, so if we, if that's what the guideline is, and we apply it to all our home events.
Here's, here's your worry.
I would accept that.
Face, face covering requirements, event personnel, media, spectators must wear masks when moving or unable to socially distance.
Okay.
And as a conference that are meeting last week. Everybody is saying, um, they're recommending masks and socially distancing, you can't sit with family.
I think that's reasonable, yeah, that's, I think that's reasonable, and that would apply to all events, regardless of whether it's school property.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
As an athletic director, didn't we say that?
We could do that. But I'm not, I will be at both events at the same time.
Sure, sure.
Impossible to do that, that's a stretch.
Yeah. That was a hangar.
Okay, so as it stands right now, we have a motion.
Got it.
I, I would draw my original motion.
Okay.
I'll make the figure of.
So we'd like to make the new motion.
Some of the replays are better than mine.
Somebody.
Make a motion that we continue to follow the district policy. Within school buildings and apply WIA policy as it stands to outdoor, provided events.
Anybody like to second that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay.
Can we specify the, the spring sports guidelines?
Yeah, just to be more specific, so what kind of.
It's spring sports guidelines.
Alright. We'll call the question, please.
Over. Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stefan.
No.
Yes.
Mitch that. Paragraph that, I can make that part of the minutes or the, make sure that it's clear that video. Just on. The opinion. From where.
And I will make sure I share that with the schools where we are speaking events.
And the athletic families.
Yes, yeah, I'll draw, I'll have, I'll push out to. Families and then I'll share it with all the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question on that, but let's say there's a school that will require all players to have.
We, we have to do what. We we have to do whatever the venue that we're playing at. We'll go go by those rules. And I told my coaches when we're gonna meet meet tomorrow after school that. They have to be prepared because they may go to a facility where the rules are more strict.
Okay, we are on to number thirteen, the second reading of rule four one one point four.
I had shared this with WSB attorney Bob Butler. He had added the word unlawful. Highlighted and sent out that update to you. That was his only recommendation and I changed to the rule. As was originally presented, so it's coming back to this meeting for approval to be included into. The board policy as rule four one one point four. I'll second.
Open for discussion.
I don't have a problem with policy. We've heard a lot of the words acceptance, see. None of us here have a problem with that. Paragraph with section four here. First paragraph, it says, any student who has a need or desire for increased privacy. Regardless of the underlying reason, may be provided with access to a single access restroom. Where such a facility is reasonably available. Middle school. Downstairs, is there a unisex bathroom where anybody can go and feel comfortable and safe?
There's not a unisex bathroom over there.
That needs to change if we're gonna have this policy. On Mr. Austin, the junior one in this area.
That area to your, to the west?
Where the restrooms are.
Not to the west, there is a single use over here though.
If a student is leaving the band room and they have to stop there, and they go down to computer room, are they gonna make the class undone? They're leaving band room, have to stop, no. The only way to put one downstairs is gonna be the the way, so we can kiss away from the body. You want me to support this? That's the only way I'm gonna support this, is if we make this accessible for everyone, because it says right in this paragraph. And as a board, we're gonna decide tonight, so we're either gonna spend a pile of money. To make this policy happen? Or not? Restrooms, lock rooms, if somebody wants to come to a football game as a spectator and they wanna feel safe, they have to have access.
I understand, but but one single use bathroom. In the upper level. I would consider not adequate. For for a team and a school. So I I understand what you're saying.
But I think there is a good question. I think just more specifically, I mean, would if we pass this policy. Would we automatically be in violation of code? Under the ADA or something like that, or or are are buildings like. Buildings that already exist, are they. Grandfathered in it based on what they already had in place?
Because we have at least one location that is a unisex, I believe we meet the code.
Okay, and to to the question about being late for class. Is that is that just an accommodation we would need to make?
No.
Just because it's a just a distance issue, I think.
Usually not a problem for anybody, they know. A lot of that stuff I would say is.
And just to be clear, this does not apply to any non-student, right, like a spectator or. I don't think the policy does apply to any others, this policy applies to airport students, correct?
Yeah, that relates to students.
But we use, we draw the term equity and equality, doesn't everyone, any person coming to this school aren't treated the same?
At the end of the third paragraph, Dr. Donovan. It refers to. Uh educators, I mean, that's the way I'm reading it, students, parents and volunteers.
Sorry, under under one section, right?
The the very, the the third paragraph.
Okay.
At the very end of that.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're referring to. So to me, there's just so much gray area and vague in it. I don't have a problem. Like I said last meeting, these are humans, I they deserve everything as everybody else, but this policy has got so much gray area. If we, I cannot vote yes on this, knowing the possible problems that could lie, because we don't have the possible right stuff for.
So I, oh. I ha- I have concerns over over section four as well, very specifically that there is. That that. That portion of the policy could create undue stress on on other students. So we have the a student who is transgender, if they exercise their right to use facilities. Um that it could create discomfort for others, but I also recognize that this um that as Kate went ahead last time. That that's not where we've been up to this point. And so as a matter of good faith in this administration and this school board, as well as future administrations and future school board. That as we continue to evolve, that this conversation will continue and will make, will make whatever adjustments need to be made. So I agree that as we consider future renovations and remodelings. That we probably do need to think more about how we're going to create spaces that allow for better accommodation. But I think this is our our good faith starting point.
I agree with that, Joni, that just maybe can you, oh, hold on, I mean, can you guys just maybe clarify? When it says this policy applies to the entire school community, including educators, school and district staff, students, parents and volunteers. And then the later language is referring to the student. You know, any student needing this and this, so when it says the policy applies, does that mean the expectations to treat the student? Rather than anyone in this.
Every person in this building and our school environment, if if we're at a baseball game. If it's a school function, every person that has to be at that function is expected to.
To not discriminate.
Correct.
With the student, so the policy applies to a combination specifically to the the student. And doesn't apply to any non-middle point student, but but the treatment of that student. Applies to the entire airport community. That's, is that how, am I reading that correctly?
My biggest problem with this is I don't understand why that has to be a policy. It's disgusting that that has to be a policy in my mind. I mean. There's.
Why do we have any discrimination?
It's, I I understand, it's just, it's very upsetting. And that's, I guess that's my, one of my biggest things that just kind of. You know, upsets me, but I did feel a lot of questions from citizen communication. On the basically number four, the restroom locker room accessibility. And I would have to say that, you know, I I. They were, they were led in the wrong direction of what they were to believe. It was, you know, kind of like we said last night. Student can't come in one day and say, you know, all of a sudden they're going into that back bathroom or locker room. But I personally do share some of those same, not that that's gonna happen, but I do share some of those concerns as well. And I. I guess that's, that's my biggest, uh. Second biggest take back on this.
I thought we were.
Go ahead. For some discussion points, I'm gonna look at paragraph or section number two, the discrimination harassment. I. I I, like like Gary said, we're all in complete agree with that. I'm I'm sure it spells it out in employee handbook, the student handbook. Probably other places in this school. And and I know it has to be done, that probably in every every policy has this. My biggest question is. Read through the policy. There are, there are many instances where there is. Gary referred to it earlier, a lot of vague language, Angela and Caitlin, maybe you can help. Uh for example, uh number four, it says in most cases. Goes on to say may be provided with. A case by case basis. An alternative arrangement should be provided. Adequate consideration generally assumed, so and I understand why it's in there, because every instance is is different, but. Who's gonna be in charge of all that?
So largely right now, I I I feel like without a policy. This policy helps me to have a sort of guideline. There's, I I'm not great with the language, but we do plan to write some pieces that. Refer to the policy that might get more clear, or say if a student needed to be changed. If we needed to write something more specific, we would, we would reference back to this policy. But it is very intentionally written that way, because each student that we're working with is kind of a different. They're, they have different needs, they're at a different place.
I understand, but I mean, in the policy, it references the athletic director and the the building principal. Specifically, as far as.
Those are relating to specifically, I think, people in sports related, so Caitlin and I would. Be communicating with the building principal and athletic director and making those decisions and provide. And even with the students and the parents, but it would fall within people services. As Caitlin said, and this is an area that she has already been supporting this year, so.
In your professional opinion, Angela or Caitlin, you you think we have enough single use facilities without, within our buildings?
Well, we have a single use, um and we have opportunities and ways within the locker rooms and the bathrooms to make. You know, them single use, I I mean, not just from my experience, but pondering to the boys bathrooms with this student. We just put a sign up that said, do not enter for the five minutes that I have been there, you know, with a young child or. Morgan might have done that in the past too, so um I will say like going back to the referendum, that was one of the things that I know. Tim talked about adding was more single use restrooms, because those are increasing for a variety of reasons. So I agree with Joni, if it's something that we ever talk about adding or additions or remodeling, I think that should be on the table. But do I think we have enough options now? Yes.
That that's a very good point, and we are on the heels of a major remodel. Is is there time and all that's a big.
There are single use at both, on both floors.
There is. Additional.
Yes.
Yeah, I I mean, and I just remembered that conversation when Tim was talking through the remodeling options. That that was one thing he pointed out, was that there would be more single. Single use restrooms for any number of reasons, uh school, they're finding one for them. For whatever reason, but I do think our facilities are adequate for now, but. I would always be in favor of additional options for more, you know, for students, for any number of reasons.
In other words, if we pass this policy, we can accommodate any student at any building.
Yes.
It's not ideal, but we can.
Right, and um to Gary's point, you know, I I raised that because that is.
Well, the language says reasonably available. I don't think any middle school has to come up here to go to the bathroom, that's not reasonably available.
But they come up here to go to the office, or if they're sent to detention, or to go to health, or to go to any number of classes. And it was part of our discussion, having them rather comfortable with, I mean, that has been um a dozen made of speech for them. If we just communicate with our teacher and they're okay with it, of course, it's not ideal. Um but like Joni had mentioned, I think it's a starting thing. I don't think that this is the last time that this, this, it's not like this is gonna be a conversation or a policy review and then we're done. Um I think that this is gonna change and evolve over the next, you know, decade.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Now we'll call the question, please answer.
Yes.
Yes.
Want to pass this? We'll go into second reading of approval, policy four twenty one. Four twenty one and four twenty one point one. Are very similar, we have policies currently in place for commission kindergarten and first grade. It kind of changes early admission, more specifically to the non. A non-traditional middle point student, if somebody moves to us without having our middle point preschool. Can we get them into kindergarten, or they come to us without being in middle point kindergarten, so can we get, and it's. It's kind of a team, the team approach, not a not a test so much anymore. And love, and certainly speak to, just that, basically that language changes to the decision goes to more of a team approach. And not a, we're going to issue an IQ test or some kind of test of that nature.
Yeah, I think it just balances out not one person making the decision, it's. Um a a number of people from the district, they have parents, and it's more of a whole child approach instead of. Facing it on a partnership assessment.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second it.
I didn't, I didn't hear you second.
Oh, make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
All right, we. I barely second that. You did.
Yes.
Yes. So much else, sorry, you want to? All right, uh is there any more discussion on this?
I'd just like to thank our staff for taking this mandatory policies.
You are hard to hear.
I've heard that before.
We've got a motion in a second, we'll call the question, please.
Done, or excuse me, Bush?
Yes.
Done?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Want to business services?
I'll move to approve the credit card statement and accounts payable.
No motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Nice. All right, any questions?
The March busing. Usually over there on a monthly basis.
Uh might be a little bit short with strike rate getting there. Where they are, forty nine. It it would be, it would be. Pretty close, I would say, um and that actually, that actually might be the February bill that we're paying in March. Reimbanced in February, they sent it to us at the end of February, so that actually might be the February bill.
Now, uh any more questions on anything bills? All right, call the question, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Um I will entertain a motion to go and convene, to convene. Um, I will entertain a motion to go and convene, to convene and to close, uh, in closed session, uh, to discuss, uh, past disciplinary.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry, straight give you something.
I know, you got something.
You got it, okay. Alright, uh, we'll call, please.
Oliver?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Done?
Yes.
Highsmith?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stepha?
Yes.
Chamber?
Yes. First student bill. Thank you everyone for attending tonight.